Councilmember Ingstrom?
Here.
Mayor Potem Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Sackfleth is not present. Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Morder?
Here. Okay, I'm not sure if anybody's signed up for public comment, Kath. This is a time now -- oh, thank you, Juliana. This is a time -- thank you, dear. This is a time now for those of you in the audience who would like to share your comments with us about things that are either on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. Anything else that's on your mind? And we welcome you to spend your three minutes. Please begin by sharing your name and then we'll listen attentively for three minutes. So are there those of you who would like to come up? Roslyn?
I haven't signed up. Rosam Coy, Mount Shasta. So I got another notice in the mail. Five bucks, five bucks there. And I know Rod, you legally have 30 days to tell us if we have the chloroform bacteria in our water, but we have a website. And now I understand we have to test weekly. Why can't we post the results when we get the results? It's -- I don't know. Do you really insist that I go out and collect signatures from everyone telling you that this is what we want? We want information right away. It doesn't cost any money. I'm sure Rod tells somebody that the test came back positive, negative, and how much. Can we have this put on our website so we can know, okay, there's something going on with our water? I have come for years now saying, I have gotten sick. My neighbor has gotten sick. I have heard from other people in town that they have gotten sick. And we have to wait an entire month before we get our little letter saying that there indeed was an issue with the water. So please ask, you know, I don't know if you need to put this on the agenda, but to put this on our city website?
Question for clarification, Roslyn. So this is Coliform, yes, not E. coli. This is a Coliform notice.
That's correct. I know, I understand if it's E. coli, you do the red, you call everybody, and you're right on, and that whole system is doing better. But why can't we have the same information without doing public record requests? I know that Tim's gotten really angry because too many public record requests have been done. So please put this on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Emily?
Hello. My name is Emily Accord, and I'm here on behalf of Clamath Alliance for Resources and Environment. I would like to take this opportunity to invite you to the -- to invite the Mount Shasta City Council to our fall timber tour. It's being held October 5th this year. To give you a little background, CARE is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We organize educational woods tours on public and private lands. This year, we're working with the Shasta Trinity National Forest to produce a tour in South Siskiyou County, which will showcase thinning operations on both public and private lands. The tour will include a discussion of sustainable forest management, wildlife and water, wildfire resilience, and economic and social impacts of the timber industry in our community. CARE is currently in the process of doing a labor and demographics study. And full disclosure, this is not a complete study, but our current estimate is that approximately 2,100 jobs in Siskiyou County are directly correlated to the timber industry. So those are direct jobs from the timber industry. And timber and related industries generally have a job multiplier of around 2.5. According to the 2010 census, Siskiyou County labor force was approximately 20,000. So if you do the math, you can see that this industry is still a very valid industry in our community, and it's very relevant. Environmentally speaking, the industry, in my opinion, stands to become even more relevant in the future. With the onset of tree mortality, pest and disease epidemics, catastrophic wildfires, and global climate change, the importance of sustain -- or sound sustainable forest management practices will only become more essential to the vitality of our region. This is an excellent opportunity for the council and staff to learn about economic environmental issues that face our area. I encourage all of you to attend the tour, and I ask that you urge any city staff that you think may benefit from the tour to attend as well. Thank you all for your time. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I also have a little flyer and a letter to you if you want to pass these over. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I'll say that I've attended the tour in the past, and they're very -- they're excellent, well-managed, well-organized. Really important information to anyone who's interested in the impacts and the degree to which we are dependent on our surroundings. Thank you. Okay, Frances, you're welcome to come in.
Greetings. Frances Mangels, resident of Mount Shasta City. I also am a member of Clamath Association for Resources and Environment, and donate to them on an annual basis. Also a member of Water, and I donate to them on an annual basis. And about 20 other conservation groups, all of which are active in, let's say, at least in California. And I represent several of them here and there and now and then. I would like to, at this time, say that you all received this notice from Noah Enlow regarding the A and E study. I'd like to comment that I have read the study myself, and I find it has some severe shortcomings in terms of the law and that its completeness and the way it was supposed to represent itself. All they did was grab some things out of the air.
Frances, I'd like to remind you to talk to city council members, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought he was part of your representation. Excuse me. All they did was grab a bunch of figures out of the air and did their best guesses. And having worked for Uncle Sam for 35 years, I've seen some of these economic studies. And I'm sure our young ex-district ranger has seen plenty of those herself. And yes, we do, and we have done, and we did. And I was part of the groups that grabbed those economic figures out of the air and threw them into federal studies of something that was supposed to be economically viable and was actually fairly questionable. And this Applied Economics Arizona Study is quite -- let's just say, it needs a great deal of improvement. And if my economics professor would have looked at the AE study, he might have given it a D in that it was at least an effort so it wouldn't flunk. Very lousy, very lousy. And I advise you to take a good look at that with a critical eye and see what's going on with that crazy thing. My goodness. Okay, speaking from the voice of experience. Okay, I've got one more minute.
No.
Yellow?
Less than that, more like 30 seconds, my friend.
Okay. I'd like you to look at the Fifth Commandment that says, "Thou shalt not kill," so you shouldn't be poisoning the air and water around here. I'd like you to look at the commandment that says, "Thou shalt not steal," and take a good look at what they're stealing when they try and do stuff around here. Okay, looks times it up. I'm sure there's seven or eight other commandments to look at. So consider the moral implications of what you do.
Thank you, Frances. Okay. Anyone else from the audience would like to speak about an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's move on then to staff comments. Bruce, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mayor Morder. Since our last meeting, we have continued to negotiate and have conversations regarding the landing development through specific development companies. That is resulting in the drafting and forwarding of written proposals from each of the companies, which, when received, and we think it's gotten to a level of sophistication we would like to bring to the city council for consideration. We've also been working, of course, with Rod and everybody on the water issues that the city's been facing. And that's basically -- that was CTC's was taking up our time.
Thank you. And are there other staff comments you're prepared to make tonight? I was hoping that we could get an update from Rod about the situation on the chlorination.
So emergency chlorination equipment project resumed. We got started that following Monday procuring parts and equipment. So we fully anticipate that to be completed by the November deadline. We also have started with the assistance of the city engineer developing our O and M prime, another condition of our permit amendment. So we don't see any difficulties with meeting all those conditions in the permit.
So by emergency chlorination, you mean the installation of the permanent system?
I mean installation of the permanent emergency chlorination equipment that was approved.
Yes.
Couple council members meetings ago.
Okay, thank you. And test results since we were given the nod on that?
Monday -- last week's samples came back all negative, so so far, so good. We're going to collect more samples tomorrow and resume our weekly schedule of samples.
Well, I'm sure I speak for the entire council and staff and town for the hard work that you and your staff, including the PACE staff, have put into this. I was privy to -- I participated in a conference call with the drinking water division on Friday, and it was apparent that they listened to us. And though we have committed to doing extra work, it's worth it to keep our water system. Other staff reports? Anything from staff? I have one other question if no one else has. Juliana, I forgot to ask you ahead of time, I'm sorry, but I'm not sure we've reported publicly on the status of the car wash storage unit project.
The project was withdrawn last Monday. So that's pretty much all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we move on now then to city council member comments. Anyone?
I was going to ask the deputy state clerk to announce what opportunities members of the committee have on committees.
You're looking for vacancies? Certainly. We have a vacancy on the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee as well as the Active Transportation Committee.
And how do people put in their applications?
Applications can be obtained online or at City Hall and then turned in to me.
And beautification?
Correct. Beautification Committee also has a vacancy.
I guess I'll just respond briefly, if that's allowed, to Roslyn's comment on transparency. I definitely believe that transparent government is the way I'd like to see us go. Just keep in mind that there's some -- not everyone's on the Internet today, so we have people that don't have Internet at home, that don't have the finances to be able to afford devices at home and stay connected. So I -- right now, we're in a phase where we need to do hard copy as well as website announcements. We have to cover the gamut to make sure everyone gets notified. But yes, I definitely believe that we -- I hope to see the government move to where we can publicly make documents publicly available more rather than less. Thanks.
We can follow up with staff on that. I don't believe that needs a council vote. So I'd like to move now to item number eight on your agendas, a public hearing for the first reading of ordinance -- oops, no, I'm not. I skipped the consent agenda. My apologies. Okay. So we have a consent agenda that I will read. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added heretofu shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, August 14th, 2017, regular city council meeting. B, acceptance of Brown Act Committee minutes for the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee meeting of June 21st, 2017. C, approval of disbursements, accounts payable August 8th, August 9th, and August 17th, 2017, and total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending August 13th, 2017. D, monthly financial and investment report. And item E, acceptance of memorandum of understanding for miscellaneous and dispatcher bargaining units and approval of resolutions number 17-54, -55, and -56, separate resolutions addressing agreements with dispatchers, public works employees, and unrepresented employees. May I have -- are there any questions about the consent agenda?
Yes, I do have a question on Resolution 54. We can do that once the motion's made if you wish, or we can move that to a separate item. It's up to you guys.
Go ahead and ask it.
Okay. Under Resolution 54, you have a modified two-and-a-half percent shift where you paid for all hours' work between 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. I was just wondering, aren't those regular hours? Did you mean to say 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m.? Just checking. Oh, that's you. Those are not regular hours. Those are swing-shift hours.
10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is a swing shift?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous approval, thank you. Okay, now we move on to the public hearing for the first reading of ordinance CCO 17-57 relating to accessory dwelling units. May we hear your report, Juliana?
Yeah, just a really quick thing. Is it 57, Kathy, because it's a CCO?
Oh, it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Right.
It's not a big thing. It's the first reading, but I just thought I'd point that out. So to continue with the staff report, so the first reading of the new ordinance is an amendment to our current accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The changes happened because of changes in state regulation. Those changes in state regulation are both positive and negative for the case of the city of Mount Shasta. It's positive in that it reduces the allowable square footage of an accessory dwelling unit. And so for the public information, an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, is also known as a granny flat or a mother-in-law unit. So it's an additional unit that's tacked on to a single-family residence. It's not allowable for any other type of land use other than a single-family residence. But it's basically like a backyard cottage that you can use for a small efficiency apartment. So it gives people -- it allows for a plus-one density for low-density residential as well as alternative housing options for individuals. We have had a accessory dwelling unit ordinance in the past. It is -- I get quite a bit of frequent questioning about it, what people are able to do, what they're not able to do. There have been a number of people who have engaged in constructing accessory dwelling units. They are for long-term rental use only. They are not a short-term rental usage for low-density residential because of our prohibition of vacation rentals in R1. But the new ordinance, like I said, coincides with the new mandates. The new mandate does allow for a smaller percentage of the square footage, so our previous ordinance had said it has to be a minimum of 50% of the livable unit, or 1,200 square feet maximum. Now it's dropped down to 30% of a livable unit. So it gives people a little bit more flexibility with the size of the unit that they can have in their backyard or above their garage. The cons to it is that in the past, the city of Mount Shasta has not permitted ADU units. So we just allow them as a use-by-right. They have to go through the building department as well as public works just to make sure that there's no capacity issues. But now, state is mandating that we do record those and do permit those. So that's for helping us with our housing numbers is why they're mandating that. The other con to this is that the city of Mount Shasta cannot charge connection fees for accessory dwelling units. So even though it is a plus-one living unit, and there is no limit on the size of the family that can go in the unit, we cannot charge any connection fees for that. It is something that has to be allowed for a lot. So there's pros and cons to the change in the mandates. The proposed ordinance is based off of the model ordinance recommended by the California Office of Housing and Urban Development. So I don't recommend changing any of it. It's pretty on point with the mandate. So there's really no other -- oh, the other main change is we cannot require parking for an ADU unit. We do highly encourage it because we are a winter community, and you cannot park on the streets during the winter due to snow conditions. But we cannot mandate that if they're within certain conditions of the state mandate, which means within half a mile of public transportation, within a car -- within half a mile of a car-sharing program. We don't have car-sharing in the city of Mount Shasta, but we do have public transit. It could pose a problem as far as parking and availability, but we do work with those homeowners to try and at least provide some type of onsite parking.
Thank you. Questions for Juliana from council?
Yes, you said a plus-one. So are you saying that if I'm in an R2 unit, I can actually have -- treat it like an R3? Is that what you mean by a plus-one?
No. So the accessory dwelling unit is only allowed for single-family uses. So an R2 that you're talking about, so it doesn't rely on zone, it relies on usage of land. So an R2 is usually in reference to a duplex property or a multi-unit property. It would not allow you to upgrade that. It has to be a single-family home adding a accessory unit. So they call it a plus-one density because most of the time with a low-density residential zoning, they only allow for a one-family unit, living unit. And so that's why it's a low-density residential, so it's a single-family house. The plus-one allows for additional density, and that comes down to our zoning code designations.
Okay. And then you said that you don't allow short-term rental because of the R1, but it's allowed in R2, R3, C1, C2, C3. So couldn't we still have an ADU that's a short-term rental in those other zones?
According to the state mandate, as I read it, that no, you cannot use those as short-term rental. They're explicitly supposed to be for long-term uses or transitional housing, which transitional housing is individuals who may be between homes, or it could be a special program that they have to enter into. Similar for supportive housing. Supportive housing, we have both transitional and supporting now. Supportive housing is more in reference to someone with a medical condition. So for example, if you have a family member who is in hospit or has some medical disability, they are able to live in that unit as a sole unit.
Juliana, I know a lot of people that are interested in tiny houses. Will this ordinance allow a tiny house, so-called tiny house, as an addition to a property?
It depends on what your definition of tiny is. So the current California Building Code does not allow for any unit to be under 400 square feet. And that's a building code issue. That's not a planning thing. So we can at least go down to 400 square feet as the smallest allowable unit, which is still a fairly small unit. But as far as the traditional tiny house that I've been hearing about is about 200 to 180 square feet, the California Building Code does not allow us to have those.
So you -- just to follow up on that, so you said 30 -- it went from 50% of the livable space to 30%. So if you're in a 1,000-square-foot home, you'd have to still meet the 400 minimum even though 30% is only 333?
Correct.
Okay.
And a 1,200 maximum if you have a very large home. You still -- there's a 1,200-foot maximum.
Correct.
Other questions? Yes?
So Juliana, although we have in the past called these mother-in-law units or granny units, they are for anyone?
Correct.
In terms of long-term residency or rental, correct?
Correct.
And they can be either detached in somebody's backyard, or they can be attached to the primary residence, correct?
Correct, as long as the attached residence has its own separate entryway.
Okay, and the owner of the property can choose to either live in the accessory dwelling unit, the ADU, or in the primary residence, correct?
Correct, but you cannot sell them separately. That's the only caveat that happens, is it has to -- one or the other has to be a rental unit. You just can't sell them.
Thank you. I was just trying to bring out some of the points in this proposed ordinance to the public. And in terms of your response to other council member about tiny homes or tiny houses, a city such as ours can choose, if we wish, to allow tiny houses. This particular proposed ordinance doesn't do that simply because we're basically adopting the state template. Is that correct?
No. So the issue with the tiny homes is with our building code. It's not with anything to do with our zoning code or the proposed ADU ordinance. So that would be a separate topic that would have to be brought up with building code adoption.
Well, the city of Fresno, for example, in, I think, March of last year, March or May of last year, did adopt an ordinance or amend an ordinance to allow tiny houses as ADUs. And certainly, they would be less than 400 square feet. So a city has the capability. This particular ordinance, perhaps because we're trying to streamline and move quickly, doesn't have that provision.
So again, the proposed ordinance is dealing specifically with accessory dwelling units. If you want to entertain tiny houses, or if you would like to do any amendments to the building code, that -- I would recommend that as a separate action item. I don't think this is the appropriate place for that item.
I was simply trying to correct the record.
Yep. Yeah, and for the record, Planning Commission during this conversation did talk about tiny homes and do want to investigate what the barriers to that would be and what actions that could be taken to allow that. So we are going to be looking into that as a separate action item.
And I did provide staff with a copy of Fresno's ordinance. I don't know if you've received that or not.
I -- again, I've been away at a conference, so I'm not quite sure if I have gotten it or not.
Okay. If after checking, you find that you don't have it, let me know, and I'll send you a copy of that ordinance.
Okay.
Paul?
Long-term rental is defined as 30 days or more?
Correct.
Okay.
So a half-mile to public transportation, does that mean in our town, half-mile from Mount Shasta Boulevard?
Not necessarily. So bus stop? So bus stops, so the bus stop that is just outside of Shasta Base Camp would count. They do have-
That's Mount Shasta Boulevard?
Yep. But not in every case, because there aren't bus stops all along Mount Shasta Boulevard.
There are.
It's, it's, as per the definition of what a public transit stop, or public transit facility is.
Okay. So that won't change much for us?
Um, no. I don't think it'll be too much of a problem, because again, we do work with most ADU applicants to say, you know, we can't require you to have parking, but if you do have an individual who's renting, who can't park onsite, that's going to cause a problem in the future with snowplow conditions.
Right. Otherwise, they would be permitted to park on street, on the street?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And one last question. Now that we're required to have a permit for these, is there a charge?
Yeah, there will be a charge.
And do we know how much that is?
Uh, no. I would have to come back with a resolution to set that. I would probably have that resolution at the second hearing of this ordinance. But normally, the permit charge is going to be the amount of staff and administrative time to review those permits. So that's generally how we calculate it. I can't give you a number off the top of my head.
Okay. And did you say you might be able to come back at the second reading with that?
Yep.
Okay.
That's a hope.
Thank you.
Another question. Just to further explain this ordinance, or proposed ordinance, to the public, the purpose of this change in state law, and changing it locally, would be to make it easier for people to have affordable homes, and also for landowners to have additional income, correct?
Correct.
Just to, sorry, I didn't read the whole ADU document, but do you have to actually provide services to an ADU? Does it need water and sewer?
Correct.
It must have.
It has to be a full livable unit, which includes bathroom, kitchen, and living space, is what they call it.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at this point. Are there those of you who would like to comment? Yes, Pam?
Hi, Pam Narona, City of Mount Shasta. This comment is unplanned, but I wanted to let you know that a good friend of mine, who is a fellow Presidian, a Presidio graduate student, MBA candidate in San Francisco, emailed me a few days ago and said, "Can I bring a tiny home to the city of Mount Shasta?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." She lives in Phoenix, Arizona, is looking to come back to California. And I guess my point is, that there might be people interested in moving up here in tiny homes, so to maybe consider it in the manner that Juliana suggested. That's all. Thank you.
I think, too, it could be a subject of the ad hoc discovery team, just as a possible solution, when we get to that point. Okay. Other comments from the audience? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing, then, and go to council discussion. Any discussion from council?
No discussion. I would move that we approve the first reading, and move this on to a second reading.
Yeah, there is a resolution. Thank you. Do we need to read the resolution first? The resolution would go along with that approval?
No resolution. It's the first reading of the city ordinance.
What is the resolution we got?
Mayor Pro Tem Stearns is correct. You're just approving the first reading.
Oh, that's the general plan. Ah.
Okay, so I'll second Tim's motion.
Okay, fine. So what is the number on the ordinance?
It's not ever yet, because it'll be 06.
Okay, it will be 06. Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, then? Thank you. Okay, we move now to item number nine on your agenda. Discussion regarding the water and sewer rates, sewer rate increases. Can we have a report from staff first, please?
Certainly. This item was added to the agenda at council request. If you recall, the state of California mandated that the city install a new wastewater treatment plant, and in order to fund that, you had to find a funding source, funding source being sewer and water rates. We conducted a 218 study with Pace Engineering and our Public Works Department. That went through the public process. It was presented to the council. You had a protest hearing. It passed the protest hearing. There was less than a 50-plus-one vote in opposition. It became an ordinance, and is now law. Since you passed that ordinance, and we've enforced those rates, set in the ordinance, we've had response from members of the public, basically, not agreeing with the rates, thinking they're too, too hard, and economic impact on certain businesses. The 218 process, as I'm sure you know, was set by state law. It's a process you must follow in order to consider raising rates. And in that process, there's stipulated, there is an equity issue. In other words, you cannot charge a different rate for the similar use. You can't use one user to subsidize a similar user. You can differentiate between categories, but not between individuals. You also must apply this rate equitably throughout the entire process, and to those users. So what is, the reason we put this on the agenda is because people wanted to come back, wanted to address the council about their concerns about the rate and the economic impact. We have Paul Reuter here from Pace Engineering, who did your 218 study. Rod, your Public Works Director is here. Merrill, Finance Director, is here. And John Kenny, our City Attorney, is here. I ask John to be here specifically, to be able to advise the council on this equity and fairness issue as required under the law. But as I said, the purpose of the meeting, the reason for it to be on the agenda, is so public members can just raise their concerns, discuss with the council, and the council, because it's on the agenda, would be free to give direction to staff as deemed appropriate. And so with that, I would ask the council openness for public comment.
Are there any questions, first, of Bruce? Okay. We have John Friar here to speak on the issue. Come on up, John. Or would, are you, we can bring a microphone to you, if you prefer.
Thank you. I'm with the Mount Shasta Resort. I want to thank you for letting us come before you tonight. I am a Board of Director and a minority owner, and I brought our, our General Manager Suzanne Bentley with, with me, to kind of put a face on the resort, because I'm not sure, I know a lot of you, but I'm not sure, you may know her, or know me. We're here on a sewer issue, just to clarify this. It's not a water rate issue, because we are, the resort is on a mutual water system, so it's totally independent of the city. So we are not involved in any water metering, and charges relative to the city. So, we, you know, historically, we've been here since June of 93. We've had a great relationship with the city. In 2000, we started the receipt of reclaimed water. That's been a strong relationship. It's prevented, as you can see in the document we distributed, it's prevented the pumping of reclaimed water or sewage to the leach fields. So that's been what I call a win-win situation. So we've had a good, strong, continuous relationship with the city. About three months ago, we received the first bill on this new rate study, result of the new rate study. Our bill went from $982 a month, roughly, $982, I'll yell, to a-
Hold on, hold on, John, just a second.
Okay. Do you want to hear what you have to say, John?
Sorry.
How many horns do we have? Two and a, three and a half?
[laughing]
Yeah, I should know this. Can you hear me now? Okay. For the long period, we've been paying $981.87, something like that, roughly $982 a month. For July, we got a bill for $6,400. This is, is almost cost prohibitive. We have to begin to look at possibly making some adjustments in what we do on the business model, which is not what we want to do. We want to keep doing what we're doing, employing people, bringing tourists to this town. So, we've looked at this, and I've, and I am a resident, also, I'm sorry, I'm not a resident, I live in a subdivision where we're paying the same residential increases, if you know what I'm talking about here. This, this status we're in is called non-residential, being the resort. And we have come up with a proposal, which is on the document you've got, that we think is fair, whereby we would like to exact the same proportional increase, which is roughly 24%, 25% for the first year, then 23%. Let me look at my sheet here, so I get the numbers right. But if you look down at the percent increases, this would be a proposed increase, based on our $982 for last year, we would go to the $1,228. And each one of those increases is proportional to what residential users are realizing, or feeling. So, so the percent increase, basically, you'll see by the end of the four-year period, or five-year total, we'll end up at $2,500 a month, which is what we feel is a fair sharing of the cost and growth, not growth so much, but the necessary improvements to the sewage treatment plant. I'm familiar with the formula that came out of the study, the EDU-
Thank you, John, I'm sorry. Are you, are you close? Your time is up.
Oh, it's my time? I'm sorry. Yeah, basically, I'd just like the council to consider this. I think it's fair and equitable. We want to continue being a partner with you, and we don't want to have to make any kind of changes in our, our business model, so I'll close it at that. So, should I stay here for a moment, or?
You're welcome to sit, and we can, oh, you have a question of John?
Yes.
Quick question. I think you skipped over the rates that you're actually seeing right now. Could you go over them again? What, what you've seen since the rate increase, what were your, what your monthly bills have been?
I'm sorry, what the current rate is?
Yeah, what, what-
Well, it's based on metering. The city now is reading our water meter. And this is not sewer, it's water. The theory here is that when you use water, minus your landscaping irrigation exemption, or whatever the term is they use, that amount of water goes into the sewage treatment plant, and is treated. It's kind of commonsensical. It all ends up there. So, right now, we're at $6,404, I believe it was, for July. That was our charge.
And what, how many gallons of water does that represent?
I'd have to look here. I've got it right here. Acquire his glasses. It was 1.2 million gallons. And again, that includes a large portion of landscaping, which we did not deduct, because I, I'd like to consider another idea, and that's what we're talking about here. It's a different idea than the metering.
So most of the water that you're using goes to the grounds?
Yes.
What percentage do you think of that water that you're using is actually going to the sewer system?
Right. Basically, and they have, maybe exemption is the wrong word, there's an allowance for irrigation. I am simply trying to come up with a fixed amount. The city can charge us. They will not get involved in having to read meters. They'll not get involved in having to calculate landscape areas, irrigation areas. They will not have to even calculate that thing. It's just a charge. There it is. It is purp- Go ahead.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Are you saying that $6,400 is including the exemptions for landscape?
No, no. Well, I'm proposing dis-
No, I'm just saying, right now, when you got the $6,400 bill-
No, we did not take that into account.
You did not deduct the landscape deduction?
No, I didn't. It's, in our case, we have about 30, probably 40 to 45 landscape areas, and I believe Rod's, and Rod can correct me here, but I believe the calculations are based on square footage of areas. We have all kinds of different vegetation, different irrigation schedules. I just think it's a hodgepodge to try to figure out truly how much water was used on the landscaping. I just think it's, it's going to take too much manpower. So we're trying to offer something that is, we think, a workable solution. Just quickly, we do, we have mutual water. We pay, the water use with our mutual water company is based on single-family residence equivalencies, an engineering calculation back 25 years ago. And we have 40 equivalencies on all the water use for the resort. This is the mutual water company. Not that we're talking apples and apples, but if you take the 40 times the current 30 that a residence is paying, we're awful close to $1,200. The $1,228 that I'm showing, that we would pay for 2017, 2018? It's a way of getting there, in another fashion. And again, I know-
Thank you.
Paul can probably let us know that this isn't apples and apples we're talking about. Water consumption, sewer discharge calculations are somewhat different. But we're dealing with chaylés that are occupied 45, 48 percent of-
John, I think, yeah, I understand.
I think we understand that, and I know that you've had an opportunity to meet with staff.
Are there other questions from councilmembers?
Yeah, I have a question. So, all the water that is used in the buildings, and not, and for landscaping, not in the golf course?
No, none of it's golf course. That is the reclaimed water.
Right.
That's the other relationship-
All 18 holes?
All 18 holes, yes.
Okay. And so all the water that is metered from this mutual water system, is all that you use? You don't use any city water whatsoever?
No. It's all the city. We do do the landscaping in front of the resort, and we do, but it's primarily the resort building, the maintenance building, the chaylés, the woodland rooms, and the-
Okay. And so that, that reading for, for the month of July was-
$6,400.
$6,400?
August.
Dollars? Or?
$6,400, yes.
Okay. Yeah, for this, for the sewage bill. But the, the water usage was 1.2 million gallons?
Well, total, total, yes. We have not removed, just to put, put it in perspective, and Rod can correct me here, I don't know what the plant's taking in now, 500, 600,000 gallons a day, give or take? So we're 2% to 3% of that, just to put it in perspective. That's how much water it is. I better stop talking, because I'm going to get off on some other subjects. So, is there any other questions? But we would simply like you to consider this. We think it's fair and equitable. We do not want to make any alterations in our business model. You know, and that may necessitate this. So we've got to pay $7,000 or $8,000 more a month overnight, then we're going to have to revisit it.
Just one more thing. The rate study does allow for taking into consideration what, what your water usage is, and therefore your sewage effluent, minus the landscaping water, which would be in March, prior to May, and after, after September. So, there may be a way to calculate what actually is going into the sewer more accurately, without going to meters. The sewage, the sewage flow is not metered, right?
Our-
It can be, but it's not right now, for the resort. Yeah.
Ours is not, no. I know, Rod's right.
I just think one of the keys is to find out what is actually going into the sewer system for the resort.
So, before we hear from, hopefully, John, around the, the sideboards we're dealing with, and perhaps Paul, I'm not sure you'll have any comment, I'd like Paul to, Bruce to comment on the, the things that you offered John during meetings, when you met personally, when John came to you with this issue earlier. It speaks to your comment. John?
Certainly. Rod and I had some discussions with Mr. Friar, and both Paul Reuter and Rod suggested that perhaps a way to address this issue would be for the resort to turn over its wastewater plans, for the wastewater lines, and their water lines, and to allow the staff to come out and conduct some analysis, to see if there was a, something that was peculiar about this particular project, that's separate from how it was analyzed in the rate study. We didn't get anywhere with that. Mr. Friar and I had a subsequent meeting, the two of us, in which we talked about, re-entered the offer to come out and do the study, and based that, was rejected. So the other thing that we offered was to install discharge meters on the wastewater lines. There are two points at which the resort's wastewater lines tie- There are two points at which the resort's wastewater lines tie to the city's system. So, the installation of two meters would give you a reading, an accurate reading of what is actually going from the resort to the wastewater treatment plant, and then your rates would be applied to that flow. That way, the resort would know that they're paying only for the flow, not an estimate of flow, but the real flow from their resort to the wastewater treatment plant. Basically, correct me if I'm wrong, but you don't have a lot of faith in meters. City uses meters to sense highly volatile and dangerous chemicals in wastewater treatment plants with a high degree of accuracy. So, I think basically that's probably the best solution to the issue here. If we start making exceptions to everything, you basically invalidate your rate study.
Basically what?
You invalidate the rate study. So, you have to be careful that one of the equity clause, that you do not invalidate your entire two-eighteen process. I mean, you... As a council, you could direct staff to go back and start over. It'd be highly expensive and time-consuming, and you would most likely end up right about where you are now. So, I think the meter is probably the most equitable solution, but we don't have a willing participant in that, so I don't know how we resolve the issue.
Thank you. Paul, have you anything to add from a... From an engineering perspective? We'll ask John to speak in a few minutes about the legalities of two-eighteen.
I don't really have anything to add. From what Bruce indicated, I feel that's the most equitable way as well, is to measure the actual flow that's leaving the facility and going to the treatment plant. I really have no other comments.
And that's doable within the two-eighteen that we passed? The rate study, we could... That would fall within our bounds to be able to do that?
Yeah, we have provisions in the rate study that allowed that in these types of situations.
Actually, I don't think there's much I can add. We set the rates by the rate procedure, not by negotiation. And we shouldn't be changing it by negotiation. But as Bruce said, if the rate procedure is being applied wrong because we have the wrong numbers, then you get the right numbers and apply the same rate procedure. Whether that's a solution or not, I don't know what that's going to do. I mean, the goal by the applicant here is to reduce rates. I don't know that that would happen, but it would verify, I suppose, that the rates we're charging are accurately reflected in the amount of water being discharged.
Thank you, John.
Can I make one more comment? Or am I done?
Sure. Oh, you have a question?
Well, I confirm Bruce. Bruce and I had the conversation regarding the metering. Logically, if a million gallons go in, we use two-hundred thousand for landscaping. We don't have to put meters in to figure out what's going out. It would be the difference, obviously. So, the reason I didn't consider the metering, aside from cost, is the fact that if we had to, we might be able to calculate the landscaping irrigation exemption, whatever the term is you use for it. I just want to make a quick statement here that this... I didn't... I read the study. The premise here is that you're treating water that's being used in your sewer system, that you're charging it appropriately, which is... Let's do a hypothetical. The guy up on A Street choosing three times the water he should ever use. He pays it on his water bill. I understand that based on the metering. How did that affect his sewer bill? It did not. So, he's putting three times the water in the system. So, let's take this guy on A Street, times a hundred of them, who has a bunch of kids, the wife does laundry every day. They're paying the water, I agree, but the sewer is totally out of control. Secondly, your I and I problem is nuts here. All I've got to do is walk out on our street in front of our resort, a twelve-inch pipe, there's your main sewer line. At normal flow, it's about twenty-five percent of recognizable sewer items. I'm not going to get into details. Wait for a large rain event, maybe three-quarter inch, wait about four hours. It's flowing crystal clear, brim full. Okay? I'm not going to get into what the causes are. I mean, I have my own theories. So, you're treating so much water that you're not charging for. I just think the premise that you're trying to bill every gallon of water that's used relative to sewer is a little questionable. I know it's a little late in the game because you've already passed this law or ordinance, but that's just my comments relative to this issue. So, anyway, that's all I need to say. I'd just like to see what, you know, what you might recommend, so.
Thank you. Do you have a comment or a question?
Question?
Any question of John?
Either of John or the staff, preferences made to two flow meters at the two connection points for the resort. What would be the cost of the two flow meters?
I don't know. Four or five thousand each or what's... We're talking different meters. I know one was installed for the campground recently, but I think that's a different... Isn't that a different flow meter? Paul, maybe it's your question. Wasn't there some airflow, something? We've talked about this, that I'm concerned about the accuracy, but I'm also... I mean, we can do the landscape deduction. We end up in the same place, Tim. I mean, really, if we get it accurate, it's the same... It's the same thing. Whatever we use minus the irrigation has got to equal, better equal, what's going through the flow meters. So, I don't see the need to do it. I think if we're going to go this route, we would try to work through the landscaping, and it's going to be an ongoing battle each month because it has to be filed monthly. Is that correct, Rod?
No. I can provide some more.
So, each month where we would need to... When you count... He counts 1.2 million gallons, we're going to come up with a number based on our irrigation uses for that particular month. I think it's windowed, though. Isn't it windowed for four or five months?
May through September.
Yeah. So, whatever those months are, we would submit our estimated water use. It's just going to be difficult. I mean, we can do the heads. We can do all the landscaping. We've got a lot of landscaping. It may be half the water. I don't know.
If the intent is to offset the amount of flow with the cost related to that, it seems like flow meters might be appropriate. You did raise concern about I and I, and I would imagine that there's probably some sort of way of dealing with that so that the flow calculations aren't artificially inflated.
Well, Tim, that was just a general comment relative to water that gets treated in the sewer plant. It has nothing to do with us. It was just a comment about the amount of water that goes in there that is really un... What's the word? Not unregulated, just it's not measured. It's not coming from a water source. It's just coming in from... I'm not going to get into this, whether it's rain through rain gutters or it's some connection of the drain system to the sewer, which is a huge no-no, but it's the history.
We've dealt with I and I for...
Along with manhole intrusion. I understand. We live in a swamp. Most of the town is... So, I... We only are offering this, we think, as a fair, equitable proposal, saving the city a lot of time because obviously this landscaping irrigation calculation is going to take some time and effort, reading the meters. Honestly, it's being offered to come up with something simple, just bill us the amount and we're good.
I hear that. I'd like to... What... And I... Obviously, you appreciate that having gone through rate study, having adopted rates based upon certain criteria, we are now bound by those criteria unless we're going to go through everything again. So, what I'm trying to find out is within the scope of the limitations that we have, where is the maneuver room for the fairness? It sounds like your proposed rates are independent of that rate study and may not fit within the area in which we can maneuver. So, I made the staff just can clarify for us.
Sure. So, there are three methods by which we can bill a non-residential customer for their sewer. We can use probably the least accurate way would be a fixture count method.
What?
A fixture count method. So, we would count up all the toilets, sinks, washing machines, you name it, whatever discharges to the sewer, count those up, apply a building code factor, drainage fixture unit value factor to those fixtures, and come up and compare that to what a typical residence would be. And so, that's kind of a hypothetical, kind of a theoretical approach to sewer rate. Second option is, as we're doing with the resort currently, is using their water meter to base the usage, applying irrigation factors to that because... So, you have all the water going through a water meter. You subtract what you think is going for irrigation, which we've attempted to do with the resort. I think... And I believe the rate that they are being charged right now does give them a landscape credit of approximately eighty-five thousand gallons, which is what Mr. Fryer came up with.
I have not seen that on our bill, but... Okay.
It doesn't show up on the bill.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it doesn't show up on the bill. What happens is the first... When we apply a landscape credit of, say, eighty-five thousand gallons, the first tier, if you will, from zero to eighty-five thousand gallons, the customer gets charged nothing. And then, they get charged the appropriate rate from eighty-five thousand, one gallons on up, above that. So, that's how our billing system works to apply the landscape credit. Whatever the credit is, it just... You get that out of the way first in the billing cycle, and then all usage is charged per thousand gallons as per the rate study. So, that is a fairly accurate way of determining sewer. There's... I think all non-residential accounts, there's at least a ninety percent factor calculated in to the rate. So, you assume that not a hundred percent of the water that goes through the meter ends up in the sewer. So, across the board, all non-residential customers get charged ninety percent of their water usage based on the water. The resort and a handful of others are unique in that we don't provide them water. However, it was agreed upon before the rates went into effect that we would use their meter and just collect their... Even though it's not our water, we would use those water meter readings to determine the sewer bill. It was the easiest. There was no cost. The meter was already there, so that's what we did. Well, we found out that one, you know, 1.2, 1.5 million gallons per month does seem a little high. So, we... But we really don't know if all of that, if a hundred percent of that is getting into the sewer. We don't know if it's fifty percent or a hundred percent. So, we have applied a landscape credit to that based on best available information we have. The third option would be to, as we discussed, monitor the sewer flow. That is the most accurate way of billing per gallon because that's the amount of water coming in and the impact from that establishment.
So, the second flow meter?
Sewer flow meter. We did install a temporary one in the Lake City Camp gallon manhole. We did collect data for thirty days, and we are now using that number for monthly billing until they get a permanent meter installed. I want to say, too, that the city's not paying for that. It is on the responsibility of the outside agency to install their own meters. I will say, too, that city staff and Paul, I can probably speak for Paul, we remain committed to working with the resort to apply the best possible method under those three options that we have, that the rate study affords us. Beyond that, as we've explained in a couple of meetings with Bruce and with Mr. Fryer, that we can't go beyond that. We don't have the capability of going outside those three options. And quite honestly, those are the three only options and fairest options that we know of. And to me, the premise of the whole rate study is to apply the rate fairly inequitably. And so, that's our goal. And that's what we're mandated to do in this rate study. But I did want to add that 1.2 million gallons is equivalent to about 225 households equivalent. So, that's a pretty big impact. And also, what a sewer meter, a wastewater meter would show us is that if some of that I and I is coming from their system, you have a rather large elaborate collection system. We don't know the age of that system. It could be contributing a lot of I and I. We could potentially even see flows higher than 1.2 million. We don't know. We don't know the condition of those pipes. But if it's coming from a private lateral, they should have to pay for it, whether it's I and I, whether it's clear water, or whether it's sewage to be treated. So, the sewer meter establishes that. And like I said, we remain committed to working with the resort to help them, advise them on how and where and what meters to install with the goal of being, applying the most fair and equitable methodology possible.
Yes, Tim?
So, follow-up for John Kinney. John, what I think I'm hearing, and I want clarification from you, is that the resort's proposal that we received here is not something that the city could legally accept?
I believe it could not. You know, we talk about fair and equitable, and we have more than one user here, but when the city imposed this rate system after the hearing, it imposed it upon all its users. And if you start making exceptions, you're breaking faith with the rest of the users. So, the... So, the... This... You establish a set of rates based on a rate study that affects everybody, and that's why you can't negotiate separate rates above that.
So, if we can't legally accept this proposal, it sounds like that what we could do is try to figure out if the 1.2 is inadequate.
Well, I think... Excuse me. I think what the... Within the rate study, if we determine that the numbers we're using are wrong, we can correct the numbers and apply the rate study to the correct numbers. And that's apparently the issue is, you know, whether those numbers are right or not. The three systems or theories or rationales that Rod talked about are all acceptable rate-setting procedures. But if we really want to know how much water is coming out of the resort, you monitor the water coming out of the resort.
Paul?
Does this allow for across-the-board difference in price for businesses or commercial versus residential? If you treated all commercial the same and did a reduction on that, would... And if you would do that equitably and fairly with all businesses? In other words, so much per gallon would be different for a commercial than it would be for a household because we do want to encourage businesses? It's just a thought if that's feasible under our rate study.
I don't think so. There has to be a balance. If you take money out of the left pocket, then the right pocket...
Okay, we're talking commercial versus residential.
But it is.
So, that's... Is that apples and apples?
The goal of the rate study is to set rates to establish the revenues that you need. If you exempt one class of users, even though it's a uniform for that whole class, if they're being treated differently, then it's not fair to all the users.
Okay.
Okay. From the rate study, page twenty-two, on the wastewater side, top of the page, "For those non-residential accounts that have more than 2,000 square feet of landscaping, which many do besides the resort, a wastewater landscape irrigation adjustment request form can be filled out, which would account for water demand between May and September. A landscape irrigation adjustment request shall be subject to approval by city public work staff." So, they fill out one of those things once, and then what sort of analysis is done? Do you look at their average water use in through... From October to April and then take the... take the average, and let that be the amount that wastewater would be calculated on going forward? And then that would have to be applied to all, any other interested commercial users that might find that advantageous? Is that a possibility, within the spirit of this rate study?
I'm sorry, is what a possibility?
Is that, is that how that would work? You know, would that be a possibility, to take their average water usage in the non-irrigation months, and let that be the basis for their monthly calculation?
So, all that is factored in. So, we take their square footage of what they submit to us, and we verify that, is the first step. They say they have two thousand five hundred square feet, we go out and take some measurements, and if it's reasonably close, okay, two thousand five hundred. So, then we then look at, we compare their average winter time consumption, and their average summertime consumption, and we look at that difference. And then we apply the square footage to that. And we also look at, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, agronomi grades, of what, how many inches per year is typical around here? And we've come up with a kind of a baseline of thirty inches per year, and so we compare how much they're watering, because some places are watering equivalent to a hundred-and-fifty inches per year. And so, we look at all that together, and determine what the landscape credit should be. And so, we do that for each and every landscape adjustment.
That's requested?
As requested, correct.
And was that requested with respect to the resort?
Well, in a way, yeah. The resort, I'm sorry, were you asking about the resort?
Was it specifically requested of the resort?
Yeah, so they filled one out, but what we did with the resort, because they had very difficult, like, pieces everywhere, very difficult to manage, so John did some calculations with his maintenance staff, and kind of determined how many sprinkler heads they had, and what the flow of each one, and the runtime, and came up with first, a two-hundred-thousand roughly number, and then it later got refined, based on some more feedback he got from his maintenance folks, and we landed on eighty-five thousand. So, we thought, okay, that seems logical, we'll use that for now. So, that's the, how the irrigation credit was established for the resort, by their own kind of data that they submitted to us.
So, would you like, do you have a question, Barbara?
I'm sorry. Does the eighty-five thousand come to a sixty-eight dollar credit? Eighty-five thousand times eighty cents per thousand, is that...
You'd have to run it through the formula.
Is that sixty-eight dollars?
No, that doesn't sound right.
More than that?
So, I'd like to give John a chance to sit, and bring this, wrap this discussion. The process from here would be, if the city council were to decide that we want to agendize this item, future, in the future, we will do that. If we don't, then the process is, I believe, is to stick with the current agreement that we have, that has been instituted already as a result of the rate study. So, I just have a comment that I'd like to make, and that is, John, I want to acknowledge how important of a partner the resort is to our town. It's been a good partnership with the reclaimed water, and of course, we enjoy the benefits of the resort. I will say that we don't enjoy the benefits of any of the tax revenues, all of which go to the county, as you're well aware. And we do have a nineteen million dollar wastewater treatment plant to install, that came with no funding, as you know. Paul makes the point, we don't want to lose businesses, it's true. It seems to me, just from the discussion that I've heard so far, that we've tried and offered a number of mechanisms, the last of which is to install the flow meter, so that we can all have some confidence about the exact amount that goes into the wastewater treatment plant. And you're, it's clear to me that this proposal you're making, though reasonable to help you not have to redo your business model, does represent a negotiation that falls outside of what would be considered equitable, using the Prop. 218 process. So, I would ask you, again, to consider the flow meter installation, and if that fails, then maybe ask the county, or put in a wastewater treatment plant, or ask the county to do so. We are quickly running out of options, and it's not because we don't like you or don't appreciate you, but hopefully you can understand our perspective as well.
Ron? To the chair, if I may, I just want to add that we could potentially install a couple of temporary flow meters at the key locations, just to establish that baseline and see what we're looking at. And we'd be happy to, with Pace's assistance, install a couple of those, just to get them installed, and see where the locations need to be, and like I said earlier, work with the resort to figure it out.
At our cost, or theirs?
Well, I think...
At their cost?
Pace has a lot of them. We're doing that for the campground, so I feel that we could offer that as well to the resort, just for the data, for a month of data, to see where at, but also with the understanding that they would work towards installing their own permanent meters, because these ones would just be temporary.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Yes?
I appreciate you and Suzanne coming forward. What we need to do is find something that works with the legal framework. And it sounds like there are a few different pricing options within the framework that's been adopted. I hope that you and staff will work together and find one of those options that works best for the resort.
We will endeavor to. I think the avenue we're going to pursue, Mr. Kenny indicated, is looking at the rate study itself. I'm not saying it's flawed, and I'm not picking on Paul, because he's sitting here, but I just, we're going to, that probably will be an avenue, because that's exactly what has to be done. You have to look at it and see whether there's some other ways, other formula that could be applied, I'm not going to get into the details of it right now, and that could take a little time. So, but we will talk, I would be, we would be interested in the temporary meters to determine flows, that's fine. We'd have to work out where we're going to put them, but I appreciate your time, I'm taking a little longer than my allocated five minutes here, I didn't see the hook coming, but anyway. So, I want to thank you, and we will work with the city to get this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, those of you in the audiences, was a unique situation. I hope that you understand the impact on all of us. I'd like to move now to item number ten.
Kathy, I believe other people had public comment that didn't get time to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, gosh. Thank you for reminding me. I'd love to hear some other public comment. Come on up, Melinda.
I know that several of you are going down to the League of Cities Conference in Sacramento in the middle of September. Senate Bill 623 is up at the legislature down in Sacramento. This bill will be the first-ever statewide tax on water bills of homes and businesses. This bill would turn local water agencies into taxation entities that send money to Sacramento with no concern for water affordability or infrastructure needs in our own town. It would open the door to future taxes on water customers to solve statewide problems. It was crafted without the input of board of supervisors, city councils, mayor committees, and the local water providers will rely on it every day. So, I hope that the three of you that go down to Sacramento, while you're there, can make some appointments with our legislatures, and discuss Senate Bill 623, because as the resort was talking about, they're already being hit hard with the new rate study. This will add another layer of taxation to not only businesses, but residences, that needs to be addressed at the local level, so that the state, we won't be sending money from Mount Shasta, or Siskiyou County, to Sacramento. I got in late, so I didn't get to do my public comment, but I wanted to tell you guys that we're involved in the Astronomers Without Borders program. Kendra over at Raventry and I teamed up, and we're sending all the unused glasses to the Astronomers Without Borders program, and in 2019, our Mount Shasta glasses will be used in Asia and South America, because the glasses have a shelf life of three years, and the next eclipse is in Asia and South America in 2019. They were collected at the farmer's market today, and they will be collected through September at Raventry. So, we're sending our glasses around the world. But please, go down and talk about Senate Bill 623.
Thank you, Melinda. Other comments? Yes, sir?
Hello. I have the, I'm totting at this, I have the Strawberry Valley Inn, Shasta Inn, and interesting listening to John, because my rates certainly went up, which the city, I submitted my landscape, and they gave me that credit. I was just curious, because Rod mentioned the three methods of calculating this, and I would think you'd reach a median between the three. I'm more than happy to offer my sewer up for metering on a temporary basis, and calculating my fixtures, and taking the three methods, the one you have existing now, which seems to be a little high, in my opinion, and the fixture method, as well as the usage method, and blend those together, and that really should be a fair rate. Again, the method now seems really high, because we have quite a bit of landscaping, which we like. We want to beautify Mount Shasta, and not look like the nest and other properties that are popping up around town. So, you know, our goal is to keep adding flowers, keep adding landscaping, and, you know, keep our end-of-town down there beautiful, and not pay a premium price for it, which I think we might be doing on the sewer use. So, you know, and I can talk to Rod, and Bruce, and whoever, you know, separately, but it'd be interesting to kind of put that together, as far as the fixtures, and what the actual cost is, based on the building code. That's something we haven't taken into consideration as hoteliers, and I know our TOT definitely stays with the city here. So, we contribute, and it'd be nice to have a fair price. If it's fair now, great, but I think it's a little, a little high. And that's just my comment.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, although this is not common, but yes, yes.
Okay, so what was your rate before and after? Can you give us a sense?
You know, and I was just on motorcycle ride, John hit me up, told me to come down here.
Okay.
I think we anticipated it was going up around, it didn't go up a whole lot, it was just like fourteen hundred dollars a month increase, over at our hotel. And it's still an impact, because, like I said, we're fifteen units, it's pretty small at the Strawberry Valley Inn, and when you take into that fixture account, you know, when we drop off to seventeen or nineteen percent occupancy in winter, like we do in Mount Shasta for a lot of the hoteliers, I think that number's going to come down quite a bit on your sewer use. Summer's great, we get three good months, but, you know, nine months out of the year, it's dismal in Mount Shasta. But it's beautiful up here, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
I have one, sorry. Have you compared your bills to other motels? I know the Strawberry Valley has a lot more landscaping than anybody else, but have you done any of that?
Yeah, I received someone else's bill on accident, and it looked like theirs was going up quite a bit, too.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't really...
I know that some, maybe some of your lines might be leaking somewhere, I don't know if you've checked those, or have a way to check those, or...
We did, the city came by, and that's what's nice about the water meter, because the water meter tells you.
Right.
And your usage is going up, hey, you got a leak.
Right.
You know, we do the test, we find it, fix it. So, right now, I think we're really at the minimal use, as far as water, and there is a lot of landscaping, and, you know, my intention's not to tear out landscaping, I like it.
It's beautiful, yeah, so...
Yeah, that's what we do, so. All right?
Okay, thank you.
I do encourage you to continue to evaluate this, and perhaps meet with staff.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll have a separate meeting, I'll get together, John, or something.
Perhaps the motelers should get together and compare notes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments from the audience? Francis?
Greetings, Francis Mangels. Yes, my water bill doubled. I like to say, I used to calculate water and irrigation for the Soil Conservation Service in Idaho, so I know a little bit about what flows through the pipes, and you can calculate a maximum through a pipe, but anything less than the absolute maximum is a swag. And I saw the twitch on your mouse, so you know what a swag is.
I think that you should continue to address the council, please, Francis.
Okay, swag, it's a swag. And I hear from the people, yes, there's laughing over there, but I hear, you know, I look at it and say, we're subsidizing corporate farms in Southern California with our water meters up here, and I look at the idea that if everybody pays exactly the same rate all the time, for, you know, per gallon, whatever you're going to charge per unit, if everybody pays exactly the same rate, well, that's reasonable, I can live with that. But if you're going to get breaks, what are we subsidizing farms down there, and not giving it to local food gardens right here in Mount Shasta? What have we got to subsidize Southern California for? I just don't get it. The clean water that he mentioned, well, easy to guess where that's coming from, that's probably just street runoff from some of the storms. The cloudburst we had two or three days ago, yeah, filled the gutters in less than five minutes. You know, sure, that's coming in. The flows and usage, what I'm saying is varies hugely, and if you start doing it with calculations, there's too many assumptions that can be done. I mentioned that earlier, A&E did it with employment, well, you can do that with water usage, too. Flat rates for everybody, no breaks for business, no breaks for outside-the-city-limits people, no breaks for anyone. And I've managed, by running these calculations on my own yard and garden, that I've managed to keep my costs down pretty much. So, it might have tripled, but I held it down to merely doubling. And if you really want to see water, I'd suggest that the Mount Shasta Resort tries air escaping. You don't need to have a big bed of water-sucking flowers all the time, just go for that. Okay, just, there are other solutions out there beyond calculations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? John?
John Kennedy, Mount Shasta. As I stated before at previous meetings, is the water, I don't have an issue with. The problem is the commercial sewer rates that are being charged. It was interesting, I didn't realize that non-residential, there's about three-hundred-and-fifty businesses, or churches, or whatever, that are on this list, and they're being charged a commercial rate, which is different than a residential rate. I guess my problem is, is like at my house, and I think I stated this one before, we use, in January, February, March, somewhere around fifteen hundred gallons of water, but in the summer months, we use up to, last month it was seventy-seven thousand. And that was to keep my lawn green. I've tried reducing the days down, I've tried reducing down the minutes on there, and I can't keep my lawn green unless I do, what I'm doing right now, that's five days a week. I water, I have four stations at seventy-five, or at forty-five minutes, I have two at twenty-five minutes, and two at fifteen minutes, and it comes out that we use somewhere between five thousand gallons for one hundred square feet of land. And in this area here, it's all lava dirt, and we've run into this problem at baseball fields, too, is trying to keep them green, and the water just percolates through this lava dirt, so it just takes a lot of water to keep that up. to keep that up. My issue is, you can ask for a, a adjustment on your commercial bill, but the adjustment that they're giving just is not realistic. They, they said down at the resort, they're giving them adjustment of 85,000 gallons, that's not even close to what they're using for water for irrigation down there. They should be getting a lot more adjustment than that. At my store downtown, not mine, but my son's, we get a 13,000 gallon adjustment, that's only half of what we normally should be getting because down there at the store, we end up using, and, and it's not going to change for sewer all year round because our business is about the same, but we use about 2,000 gallons worth of water for our sewer. And with our adjustment of 13,000 gallons, it brings ours down to about 12,000 gallons that we have to pay for and we get charged that sewer rate of $30. So we're going to pay $60 for that sewer rate extra than we should be paying. And that's what's happening with all these commercial buildings downtown. And I'll find that the commercial ones that have yards are the ones that are paying more. The other commercial buildings are pretty much breaking even or they feel it's pretty fair. It's just the ones that are doing the landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Do you have a number for total wastewater processed every month? Do you have that calculation?
He doesn't have it with him.
But you are able to calculate that total wastewater process? So could you, it seems to me, I'm rather new to the, the subject, but it seems to me that you could reverse engineer it and get a more accurate number by having total wastewater usage and then by everyone except for Mount Shasta Resort? And then you'd have a number for a particular month, it'd be an average because it would be a variable over time, but you could calculate this over a period of time and then you could actually see a pattern and get something close to accuracy. So pulling the, the businesses out, so you've got everybody and then you pull out Mount Shasta Resort and that's a number. Next month, you've got everybody, you pull out Mount Shasta Resort. Instead of spending a lot of money on a meter, you could actually get actual numbers every single month. And you could actually program that to do it for everybody? Maybe.
Thank you.
Could you, could you please state your name for the record real quick?
Oh, yes.
Tara Gardner.
Are there other comments? Yes, sir?
Chuck Schlumberger at Mount Shasta. And property owner here, but also representing some of the nonprofits that have, like the churches, that have seen a huge increase in their sewer rates. And even the park here and the rest of the parks. The, the methodology in the rate study for non-commercial does not fit every situation. And I think, I don't know if Mr. Kenny remembers, in McLeod, we had some of this similar situation when we were doing some rate studies some years ago. And it's complicated. It's not easy to take one type of system and, and make it work for all situations. So what I'm getting at is that the, using the water rate for non-commercial sewer usage is probably the most inefficient way of doing it. There are other ways, but it's very complicated and it takes a lot of time and each parcel or each property has to be looked at individually because it is a very complicated situation. So there's fixture units, you can use that, but modify it with the amount of usage, like, say the church only is, uses, well, for instance, the Catholic Church has one toilet, one sink, or two sinks, I guess, and they're being, well, they use that maybe once a week, or it gets used a couple times a week, say. So, and yet they're being charged at a, a rate that's, I think was 10 times a residential rate right now. So it doesn't make sense, just looking at it. So what I'd like to see is the, the staff or the council asks the staff to go back and review many of these special cases and, and make it, it can still fit within the 218 requirements. In fact, it, it probably should be reviewed to be able to fit into the 218 requirements for equity rate assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, lots of comments. I just want to reiterate that we put this on the agenda, not because we had to, but because we know this is a, an issue to many in this town and we are intent upon understanding the impacts from you and with the idea of looking at any possible solutions that are legal and within our ability to, our resources to manage. I, I will personally say it's a bit frustrating to hear all of this after having given, having had, I believe, three public meetings on it, some of, some of the comments we've heard before. And a year's worth of bills set out so that you could look at your bills and begin looking, begin seeing what the impact would be and then not until after we enact it do we hear, do we hear this. So I'm, I'm sure you can put yourself in our shoes as, as well as we try and put ourselves in yours and we will continue to look at the issue. I want to move on now to another agenda item. Thank you very much for those of you who've come to, to share your information with us. It's how we make good decisions, preferably before the fact, but we'll get there. Okay, I'd like to move now to item number 10, the Climate Resiliency Synthesis Report. Juliana?
Thank you. So the city of Mount Shasta was chosen about six months ago to participate in the National Resilience Dialogues, which is a, a program that was bred out of the Obama administration through the American Geophysical Union. We were part of the beta testing, so this is a program that's going to be launched nationally here in the next year and a half, once they've gone through. So it consisted of 10 communities, Mount Shasta was the smallest community that was taking part in the beta as well as the alpha sections of this program. And the program basically aims to address climate resiliency, which also includes disaster resiliency, looking at community context and how ways cities can infuse resiliency into their planning documents as well as practices. And so the definition of resiliency can vary among different professions, but at least for this case, we really think about resiliency as a community's ability to address issues of change and respond and basically bounce back. So we use the metaphor of a rubber band. So the higher level of resiliency you have, the faster rate you come back to your normal or a newer normal circumstance, similar to kind of what we were talking about with the Housing Discovery Team a few weeks ago. So for this process, we were paired with a number of subject matter experts from a variety of different fields and that's in your packet, it's on the second page of the synthesis report, which should be attachment one. I'd like to thank the community partners that we had, Angelina Cook as part of the Mount Shasta Bioregional Ecology Center, and then Paul Beck, who was one of our planning commissioners. They helped scope the community context so that our subject matter experts could better understand what our situation was here in Mount Shasta. And so these people came from across the United States, some coming as far from Ohio to assist us with developing the synthesis report. And so out of the synthesis report, we have a list of key questions that the Mount Shasta community leaders are seeking to answer regarding how to proceed with building climate resiliency and then some highlights of what came out of that. And so the importance of why we're doing this is because of, you know, the experiences we've had this past January and February and what's happened with our infrastructure, what's happened with our ability to finance, what's going on in the city. We've been placed on two of the three federal declarations for the state of California in January and February because of the massive amount of snow that we got that melted quickly, which basically resulted in the Oroville Dam in February, was the excessive amount of precipitation that happened. And so as we strive to be the best city that we can, we have to really start looking at climate adaptation, natural disaster, resiliency as something in all of our, our infrastructure projects as well as practices. So the community context is on page three of the resiliency report, attachment one, and they did a really great job putting together what our community context was. So the individual who put this together is, has never been to Mount Shasta, they did this all based off of our input, which was really great. And some of the things that stood out to myself as well as the group is the second paragraph on, at the bottom of page three, under community context, "And surrounded by lakes, rivers, forests, mountains, Mount Shasta is rich in natural capital. This natural capital provides outdoor recreation opportunities and aesthetics and is a point of local pride and community identity. The community is invested in protecting the region's vast expanses of forest as well as a large number of endangered and special status species that live within the unique microclimates of the region." You know, it was really great to go through this process and, and hear someone get that out of something that we told them, that they've never really been here or seen it, that our natural capital is really what makes us unique compared to other communities in the United States. So moving on to page four, it starts our list of key questions that we went through. They've been sectioned off into general categories, enhancing community safety and resilience through infrastructure, capacity building, which includes organizational capacity as well as financial. And then we also did a financing section, engagement, collaboration, and ecosystem services valuation. So eco-services service, ecosystem services valuation is putting an explicit economic value for environmental public goods, so how do you value a drop of clean water? How do you place a dollar amount to a scenic vista? It's a very difficult thing to do, but there's some questions associated with it that we can move forward to better communicate the value of this area in other realms other than environmental experience. So the dialogue highlights and resources kind of continue what they got out of it, community needs and climate impacts, some of our key assets that we have that were outlined, our community buy-in, there's a high degree of public participation as well as support in the local community for environmental conservation and sustainability initiatives, natural capital, again, like they had said, with, it's a fact of local pride for us is that natural capital. Our sense of place and our size, so even though we are a small community and have limited resources, being a small community allows us to scale certain public policy recommendations and have very quick results from some of those things. So in reviewing how we're going to go forward, on the last page of attachment one, is page 20 of that attachment, the next steps for consideration, we've been moving through, there's seven of them, we've been moving through these next steps for consideration. And one of the things was, is we use this to apply for the building resilient, or building regional disaster resiliency in California program, which we were accepted to. That is a FEMA Area 9 and EPA program through their sustainable communities. So what they'll be doing is they'll be holding the interactive workshops that were recommended through this process. And again, so this resiliency dialogue, along with our building regional disaster resiliency project is all free. We are not paying a cent besides my time facilitating this, which is pretty minimal. And so FEMA and EPA will be up here later this fall to start our climate and disaster vulnerability assessment for us and that'll be an end product for them. And then we can use that with our local hazard mitigation update, which we had planned to do, as well as other planning documents. So we move into answering some of the questions that we had and the general questions that they brought up are, what are some high-impact next steps that we could do that would be the best cost benefit for us? So one of the things that came out of it was recommending a full general plan rewrite. This is a recommendation that I had posed to the planning commission and they unanimously approved as well for your consideration. The reason why I'm proposing a general plan rewrite, especially focusing on climate resilience and, and climate change, is kind of a multitude of reasons. The first being, this resilience dialogue went so well that our subject matter experts want to continue to work with us. And so we're working with the Vonovitch School of Public Policy at Ohio University, I believe it's the Scripps Institute down south and then the Desert Institute in Arizona, would like to partner with us and bring PhD students here to do data collection as well as methodology and public policy implementation. I was just at Cal Poly this past week and they've agreed that they'll look at some projects that we have and some students from there as well. It's also opened up opportunities with EPA, FEMA, as well as other state agencies. So city manager Bruce Pope and I went to Sacramento and met with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and they've agreed to lend technical assistance as well as grant funding and educational materials to doing a general plan rewrite focusing on climate change because the general plan guidelines have been updated for the first time since 2003, just this past month. And their main focus is trying to get cities onto the new mandates, which focus on greenhouse gas emissions as well as climate change.
Focus on what?
Greenhouse gas emissions and climate change. So the, the general plan recommendation also takes into account the things that I've heard within the last about year and a half that I've been here. Some of the difficulties that I've had in my office as well as I've heard in other committees as well as community members is, the city of Mount Shasta struggles with its sense of place. So it was interesting that key, key asset was our sense of place because, you know, a lot of people have struggled with our designation of an Alpine community, a lot of people have struggled with who we are and what types of industries we want to bring here. We've struggled with collaborating between multiple groups of individuals throughout the city. We've struggled with outdated plans, we've struggled with not meeting state mandates. We, we've struggled with a lot of things in the planning realm and I think that's mainly due to the focus that we've placed on planning in the past, from my experience. And so I think doing a general plan rewrite, and the scoping document is attachment two of your packet, the scoping document is a little bare bones at this point because I've kind of put together as many deals, if you want to call that, behind the scenes before bringing it up to you to say, you know, we do have a lot of support for this, but I'm at the point now where I can't continue to leverage funds, leverage programming until I get the okay by the city council that this is a priority. So what I'm recommending is about seven deliverables that'll come out of this process and that could change based off of framing conversations that we have. The, the general plan process involves a heavy amount of community input and so the first year to year and a half is mainly just framing. It's asking, you know, what are the real problems, what are things that we need to start addressing? And it really digs down into the community need as well as data collection and data output. And so the, the recommended elements that I have listed for deliverable number one, which is a general plan, could change. There are some optional elements in there that I've heard from individuals, economic development, air quality, water quality, there's a few more for historical and cultural amenities, public facilities, those could change based on the framing conversations that we have because that's where we kind of dig down deep and see what the community is really sensing and what it really needs. So those are the proposed through there. In addition to a general plan rewrite, we would also redo our zoning code, which is in response to our land use and circulation, which I know the, the Housing Discovery Team has talked about a little bit already of possibly being a huge barrier to housing issues. It would also include green space and green infrastructure planning, which would be a specific plan that would look at trails, stormwater retention, as well as green space and park facilities. We would have an economic prosperity plan, which is modeled off of a method that Tahoe used, which Tahoe did a prosperity plan, which doesn't look at economic development in terms of jobs necessarily or GDP producers, it looks at wealth rather than just an economic dollar. It looks at what are the type of jobs that we have, what type of labor pool are we producing? And it's a much richer way of doing economic development than just looking at, are we attracting people? It looks at good jobs, which we classify as at or above median income. So that prosperity plan would be a specific plan that, that comes out of the general plan itself. So it is a number of deliverables and I have broken down some of the initial steps that would be, need to be done in the scope of work, but it would probably be a little bit longer than I had previously anticipated, so it would probably take three to three and a half years to do a collaborative in-house rewrite. And then one of the things that I was going to propose to change is that And then, one of the things that I was going to propose to change is that instead of a 2040 timeline, we would be doing a 2045, which would give us a little bit more time on the front end to do the planning aspect. Like I said, a general plan is your main scoping document. It's how you are supposed to be planning your capital improvements plan. It's how you go forward with spending your money, resources. And it's something that I would not advise to really borrow from others, or, you know, skip corners and just not invest as much time that's needed. And so, one of the themes that, the theme that I'd like to approach the general plan rewrite with is called the spirit of Mount Chasta. So, one of the really unique things that I've encountered since moving here is the number of people who accidentally moved here. The number of people who their car literally broke down and they haven't left for seven years. There's a very rare sense of, it's unheard of. Normally, it's like Kansas, my car broke down and they're keeping me here hostage type thing. But, you know, that sense of community and that spirit of why people are here is very different, and I think it's something we need to start exploring, because it's that spirit of adventure, that spirit of opportunity is why we're here, really. I mean, you had the original Native Americans who held the spirit of the area, the spirit of natural resources. You had people coming here for opportunity with the gold rush. And now, you're starting to explore a whole new realm of, you know, people coming to this area for various different reasons. And I think we need to explore that, and we need to start building off of it. One of the big things, too, is the spirit of adventure, of people coming here to recreate and loving it so much that they don't leave. I met a number of people at the conference in San Luis Obispo last week who have second homes here. They recreate here. They're very familiar with the area, but they've never applied their profession there. They've never had the opportunity to, you know, partner with us, and they were really excited that we're even considering something like this. I think going forward with a general plan rewrite captures that spirit that we haven't been tapping into nearly as much, and it gives us an opportunity to start meeting the needs of our unique community. The other big thing, too, to note is, based off of the information that I got from this past conference on planning mandates and things, we're very behind. And if we start really prioritizing the mandates as separate items, we're basically rewriting our general plan anyway. We're behind on circulation elements. We're behind on noise updates. We're behind on a lot of different things. And so, doing the general plan would also be cost-effective for us, as opposed to doing each element piece by piece. It is a huge endeavor. It's exciting. I think we're going to be getting a lot of support from the state, as well as attention because of it, which is really great for this area. They're excited to be up here and excited to send funding. So, I'm hoping that the council sees that this would be an advantageous move for the planning side of things. This would help us with infrastructure improvements as well. SB 1 funding, as well as other infrastructure funding, is now asking for greenhouse gas inventories, as well as how you're going to meet your greenhouse gas reduction goals. We don't have any reduction goals. So, it's a good time to start doing this, because if we can't answer that question when we're looking for funding, we're going to lose funding. And one of the things that came up is there was a really prominent court case that just happened this past year. If you do not have a greenhouse gas emission or greenhouse gas goals incorporated into an approved plan, basically, all of your projects under CEQA have to be net zero greenhouse gas impacts, or they need to offset all of their greenhouse gas impacts, which is cool. It's a very cool concept. But I think maybe we want to ease into offsetting our greenhouse gas emissions per each development. It might be a shock to the development area and might cause some issues if we don't address these needs right now. So, I'll open up for comments.
Before we go to comment, Juliana, would you reiterate what exactly you're looking for from us tonight?
So, I'm at the point where I just, I would like the, basically, the go-ahead to revise the general plan. I did provide, I apologize, I did provide you guys with a copy of a resolution that was not provided in your packets, and we have extra copies as well for the public if they want to look at it. But basically, it's just giving me the thumbs up that you want to go forward with a general plan rewrite as a primary priority for my office. We would finish ordinances, the special event ordinance, sign, lighting, I think that's it. There might be one other one that I'm forgetting. Basically, planning commission would finish their current charges. One of the things to point out is that the 2017 priorities that were charged to the planning department and planning commission, they're pretty much on their way to being done. Oh, cannabis was the one I forgot. We're going to finish up those. Pretty much, they've met their quota for this year, which is pretty impressive, and I'm pretty proud of them. And so, we would finish up that work and then, pretty much, move into just doing the general plan and day-to-day operations. So, no more ordinances unless it's absolutely necessary. No more amending the municipal code until we move forward with general plan amendments, which you wouldn't want to amend the municipal code too much while you're redoing your general plan, because it may become inconsistent. You may have to change it after the general plan rewrite.
Thank you. Questions of Juliana?
Would it be your idea to hire interns to help you with this? I know Cal Poly did a lot of weeds, was hired to do their general plan.
Yep. So, right now, I have the application ready to go. I just need the go-ahead. So, there's a number of different fellowship programs that we're subscribing to. So, one of them is called Civic Spark, which gives two fellows for 11 months, 27,000-plus hours are required. They would be master's, PhD-level students. I don't get to pick the university. They go, it's like an AmeriCorps program. They would be hired to do certain things on it, so I'm going to be applying for that one. The other one, too, is the American Geophysical Union. And I are in discussion right now about bringing a team of subject matter experts to the city of Mount Chasta for data collection and data methodology construction. So, even though we might not be able to have them onsite to do all of the data collecting, we can use volunteer corps and have the methods just drafted ahead of time and do the volunteer training, which frankly, is a really good idea in some circumstances, because it helps with community buy-in, to have people more engaged in that data collection. And it's something that we can also have our residents and individuals in that volunteer corps continue with after the general plan, so we can continue to monitor progress in some circumstances. So, there are a number of different programs that I'm currently engaged with. I'm just, I wanted to get it through the correct political channels first before investing a lot of my time or any city funding towards this.
Juliana, do you have suggestions on how to move forward with our broadband ad hoc committee, given that there's no specifics in the general plan right now? If you're going to take three and a half years to come up with a new plan, what are you suggesting for that committee?
Yeah, so I did include the SMART element in the deliverable number one. So, I still would like to do that, and we do have some interest from other outside groups that are willing to invest in that element, as far as helping us put that together, because that would also look at autonomous vehicle preparedness. As far as next steps, it'll depend on what CTC comes up with and what you guys end up recommending. I know in the past that I had recommended working with current providers and talking about shared goals. We would, most likely, well, we would definitely, we would definitely do an assessment as part of the SMART element to kind of gauge that. So, we would probably be killing that bird with that stone. As far as concrete investments, it's going to be up to the council if you feel comfortable investing that much money in an infrastructure that's not in the general plan. It could be deemed inconsistent with our current general plan. It does put a timeline on actual construction, but that doesn't necessarily stop us from having those community meetings with ISPs. That could be something that's part of the methodology. So, there's a way to wrap in some of your recommendations into the data collection methodologies of constructing the SMART element. So, it could give us a step ahead, actually, in that construction, if that answers your question, Paulie.
So, Juliana, along those lines, how would this general plan rewrite affect the development of the landing?
So, the landing has its own specific plan, and that's pretty consistent with our PD's plan development zoning code. I don't foresee that changing in the zoning code or the land use or circulation aspect, because it is such a large piece that's been specifically invested in for land use planning. That could easily be wrapped into our new general plan. So, I don't think it would interrupt it at all, frankly.
Yeah, so in other words, if a master developer came by and wanted to do something relatively soon, far in advance of three to five years, that wouldn't be held up?
I don't believe it would, because you would just follow the current specific plan that's prescribed to it right now. There could be an ability to utilize some of the information that we've collected by that point to inform the master developer of this is the direction the city is starting to go. So, it might actually be very helpful for the process as far as onsite development of specific projects.
Juliana, I think the idea of the general plan rewrite is presented is exciting, and it could be a major step forward for the city of Mount Chasta. I do have some questions. One also was related to delay of development of the landing. The current plan development does not have provision for any residential on the landing. And we may, as a council, decide to modify that. Is that going to, is this proposed project of the complete general plan rewrite going to interfere with our potential decision to modify the plan development to perhaps allow residential on parts of the landing?
So, it'll depend on how you want to approach it. If you're doing, and I've had this conversation with the city manager before, so I'm pretty up on what we can do. So, what you can do is you can amend the current specific plan, but you can only amend one of the subzone areas. And what you can do is you can do a supplemental EIR to that specific plan and do that that way. The issue with onsite residential is the long-term parking is a huge issue, along with, you know, noise sensitivity, things you want to consider there. So, that's one avenue you can take. So, you can amend the specific plan. That should be okay. The other avenue you can take is, and this is up to the choice of the council and depending on the direction of the framing, you could elect to revise the entire plan of the landing to not be a specific plan anymore and to be part of that general plan rewrite. So, you could basically scrap your specific plan and have it basically go into the major plan itself. So, you do have a number of different options. It depends on, you know, how radically do you want to change that land use? If you'd like to consider a multitude of different changes, not just the residential, which you may, you can rope it into the general plan. So, part of that general plan is a zoning code amendment, and what you can do is amend that zoning code to be more of what you wanted to see on that land, if that makes sense. So, you could change the zoning code, which then takes away your specific plan, and then you start over with something new. And then, you wouldn't have to do a project-specific EIR for that. It would just be roped into the EIR of the general plan.
And with the general plan rewrite, they're talking about that would take perhaps three and a half years. Are there milestones so that parts of the general plan, particular elements of the general plan, might be revised and perhaps adopted along the way so that all development or progress doesn't necessarily stop for three and a half years?
I would not recommend that. Normally, the full general plan rewrite has to be internally consistent. So, approving elements before other elements are done, you run the risk of becoming internally inconsistent. That being said, a general plan rewrite doesn't halt all development. You can continue to develop with your current plan. What I would be recommending in future meetings is putting a moratorium on rezonings, putting a moratorium on certain things that are going to change anyway with the general plan. But if, for example, someone does come in, wants to do a master plan of the plan development, they can do that. That's part of our current plan. You've chosen not to do a moratorium on development. There are ways to still allow certain elements to go forward. As far as milestones, again, the first year to a year and a half is going to be framing. So, you're going to get updates. The other thing I'm recommending in the resolution is that the planning commission be charged with the framing and steering of the general plan. So, you'll have the Brown Act minutes for all of those meetings. Those will all be open to the public. We'll probably do quarterly reports on the progress of what's going on with that, and you can request reports as much as you really want, frankly. But I guess if the concern is that development's going to halt, I don't think that's necessarily the risk here. Obviously, large developments, so for example, north of Spring Hill, we have a lot of infrastructure issues up there. We have a lot of zoning inconsistencies. That may pose a problem, but again, I don't think it's going to be nearly as restrictive as what your current plan already is. I think your current plan is restrictive in and of itself to development, that I'm not too worried about it.
So, another question, actually, let me ask this question of legal counsel. We received a proposed resolution 17-57 tonight to move this forward, but it's not a...
But it's not what?
It's, the resolution is not indicated in the agenda and the adoption.
Well, the agenda recommends action by the city council, so you could do it without a written resolution. Somebody could make a motion in a second, or somebody could read the resolutions.
All right, so...
Yeah. You'll be okay doing that. Let me, if I comment, there was concerns about the landing and the general plan. Moving ahead with the new general plan would not in and of itself affect the landing in any way. I mean, if you've got a, it may in time, depending on how you're going with the general plan. And you have a specific plan there, which, no surprise, wasn't written by a developer who wanted to develop that plan. So, you know, common sense would suggest that if, any one developer comes in or a series of developers, they're going to have a proposal that makes economic sense to them, not necessarily consistent with the specific plan you have there now. So, your flexibility on developing the landing would not be impacted by starting on a study that could result in a new general plan. As you go down the road, it could, but you would know that as you go down the road.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Paul? Okay. So, zoning, I guess my, I love this thing. I love this proposal. I think it holds great promise for us. I am concerned about what would be slowed or halted in the short term, and it's, and not being able to see clearly enough, even though you put, you did a good job of all the deliverables and the questions and that sort of thing, what all we would address. I'm, like, for instance, zoning. You say in there we would switch to probably, to a design and performance-based code. I don't know what that is, and I am thinking about the housing ad hoc that we're on right now. We've tossed around the idea that it's very possible that zoning is one of the constraints to offering a fuller range of affordable housing. So, what's design and performance-based zoning code, and to what degree would something like zoning be held off for what's an unacceptable amount of time to me? Three and a half years? We can't, I mean, I guess I need to know more about the kinds of things we wouldn't be able to enact. Does that make sense?
If, if I may, and Juliana will have it, but embarking on a general plan wouldn't stop anything. You would have to stop it along the way, like she mentioned, a moratorium on zoning or something like that. So, who knows? I mean, it could happen that somebody would come in and say, oh, I want a zoning change, and they're working on the general plan and says, well, wait a minute, you know, maybe we better wait. But that's a decision you would make when that issue came up. Embarking on the general plan change doesn't declare a moratorium on anything.
Sure, thank you.
John Kenny is correct in that. One of the things to caution, too, is when, so your zoning code is an interpretation of your land use, your circulation, along with a few of the other minor elements. Right now, your general plan, land use element and your zoning code are directly linked. And to change your zoning code, you would have to change your general plan. So, basically, the zoning code would have to wait a little bit as far as making large changes to it. One of the things we have done in the past, though, is, for example, if setbacks are an issue, we do have other options like the R1U zoning, R1B1. We have a few overlay zones that aren't actively used in the city limits right now for housing or development. So, we do have some minor options for us in the interim. But as far as major changes to the zoning code is kind of more of what I'm talking about, that would have to wait about three, three and a half years.
that would have to wait about three, three and a half years. And actually, when I told OPR that we were going to do about three, three and a half years, they pretty much said that that's a very quick process. So frankly, we should have started six months ago, but
And does that timeframe include the EIR accompanying it? Or is that in addition?
I'm hoping that that includes the EIR. But again, it's going to really depend on the amount of framing, the amount of other inputs that come into this. One of the luxuries is, is you can start doing parts of the EIR prior to going through that full process, like the project description and some of the things. We can keep all of those things in mind, like a checklist, while we're putting things together. And ideally, if you're doing a general plan focusing on climate change, the environmental review should be a pretty easy thing because you're considering the environment.
And I understand you're taking classes to enable you to work 24 hours a day without sleep. Is that, am I correct?
I'm down to like three hours. I'm pretty excited, so.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, I'd like to hear a motion. Oh, gosh, we're not doing well tonight. It's a good thing. It takes a village. Thank you very much. I'd love to hear public comment. You're welcome to come up, one by one.
Hello, I'm back. My name is Emily Acord. I am a planning commissioner. And I'm here in support of Giuliana's request tonight. I think a lot of your questions have kind of been about what will come to a halt. But I think it's important to note that a general plan overhaul is inevitable. And really, this three years that it's going to take to do it, by the end of it, we will almost be due for a required general plan review anyway. And although our plan is only 10 years old, it is my opinion, it's a good plan, but there are a lot of parts of it that are extremely generic. And this is an excellent opportunity to really develop a plan that is comprehensive and it's specific to Mount Shasta. And as Giuliana mentioned, the rubber band effect, the resilience, our ability to bounce back from things, it can be seen in all aspects of our plan. Our zoning code, our public facilities. I mean, when we first talked about resiliency, we talked about green building supplies. We talked about using things that are going to last longer instead of doing the quick fix. Even in our architectural development guidelines, I mean, we can ask that people use things that are higher quality, better for the environment, that sort of thing. So, and absolutely, it goes into economics as well. I mean, this could be extremely economical, economically suited for the town. So I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we have a planner right now, hopefully for a long time, that is really devoted and excited about this. And we may as well really take the reins and do this while we have the opportunity. Also, I know that there's a huge amount of funding for resiliency projects across the U.S. right now. So this is a time to do this. Anyway, thank you.
Good evening. Melanie Lindling here, planning commissioner. And I just wanted to provide a little background on my experience having been through our previous, our current general plan. I was here for the revision of that. And I think we're really lucky to have Giuliana. And she's a dynamo. She's come up with this great idea. She's leveraging resources that we probably couldn't otherwise get. I don't know that this kind of opportunity would come along anytime soon. I think it's really important to understand the level of effort it's going to take because writing general plan and the environmental documentation. And she's a busy person already. So I would ask that you make sure she gets the support she needs because it's going to be, she still has a planning job to do on top of writing a general plan. So if you all could please make sure that she gets what it takes, assistance, funding, extra bodies to make something pretty unique happen for us. And then if you have any questions of me for what the process was like last time, I know Tim was here when we did it. But it took a while. It was a big project. The planning commission was involved, you know, over two years, I think. That's it for me.
Thank you, Melanie.
Francis Mangels, local resident. The question was asked, ladies and gentlemen, why are we here? Well, it's clean air, clean food, clean water, and a fairly nice seasonal climate. This looks a lot like western Montana, only it's a little more civilized. That's why we're here. Okay, other question. Greenhouse gases? Well, our sources are probably mostly due to general energy inefficiency around here. You could blame cows nationally, but we don't have that many inside Mount Shasta. Okay. Local eco-damage is obviously present here in Mount Shasta. I can cite about a half a dozen right off the top of my head where there's very clear plain and present ecological damage occurring within the city limits of Mount Shasta. Another thing I noticed, did I hear John tell you that it takes 5,000 gallons per 100 square feet of lawn to keep his lawn green? Well, that's really strange because, you know, in my work as an SCS, and I have proved it in practice here in Mount Shasta, my lawn takes less than 50 gallons per 100 square feet, and it's green all year. I don't know where in the world that 5,000 gallons is going. When you form this committee of city council and planning commission, put a bunch of scientists on that committee. Or at least have us come in as advisors, speakers, where to get them. Uncle Sam, I'm sure, has quite a few. Maybe the Forest Service might volunteer somebody. There's me, 35 years of it, right here in this area. I volunteer. There are probably some pretty good people floating around COEs that would come in and give you some hints like, this is the ecological factors that are actually active and harming Mount Shasta City as we speak. Get some scientists into that crowd. There are practical things we can do to increase the safety and the well-being of this city. All you have to do is ask a scientist, comes right out of there. Okay. Now, I'm tired and I'm hungry. And I'm going to quit unless there are any questions that immediately pop up. Okay, you got rid of me for another city council.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Hi, Pam Narona, Mount Shasta. I fully support Giuliana's advice in, you know, putting together this new rewritten general plan, taking into account climate change and sustainability. Sustainable management of our resources, of our economy, our social resources, natural capital is very important. The city of Mount Shasta being behind in a lot of the entities in the general plan, this is a prime time for us to step back and take that time, you know, to do it right, even if it takes a little bit of time to get there. Along with that, I think a few of us have a little bit of concern about the landing. We haven't heard a lot, you know, lately. I think several months ago, we had a couple of special presentations. And I don't know if we're allowed to know, if it's transparent, to know what corporations or what developers that the city is currently in conversation with for the landing. Aside from that, I think we need to be really careful, you know, with the specific plan for the landing. Maybe it might be a good idea to lump that, let the specific plan go and let the whole thing fall under the new general plan. And I guess part of the concern is we don't want to see another backlash of another corporation coming into the city that a lot of citizens may not, you know, agree with. So I don't know if you can answer that question now, whether we can be transparent or I'll just comment. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Here she comes. Get along.
No crutches, no game. Raven Stevens, Mount Shasta. I have read over the weekend, I read and gave comments back to Giuliana. I fully support this. I think it's a great thing. A couple of things that are alive right now is we talk about greenhouse gas emissions. We don't have anything here. There's no air quality monitoring in Mount Shasta. And Crystal Geiser proposes to off-gas a lot of greenhouse gases here, right, right at the city's edge. The other piece that shows you that we need an upgrade is there's no noise element. And again, Crystal Geiser proposes to put a lot of noise into the neighborhoods. And I think if we're not proactive and get this done, it's going to cost money for the city to fight in the court of law if they want to take care of their citizens. It's going to cost, you know, time and effort. And I just think that your guys' legacy could be a proactive general plan with a city planner who's got a lot of juice right now. And I would say harness that if you can. And interns, you know, and smart young people from colleges and stuff helping, I don't see what could go wrong. I might not be seeing everything, but I definitely think it's time. So thank you, I support it.
Thank you, Raven. Angelina?
I'm Angelina Cook. I live in McLeod and work here in Mount Shasta. I want to reiterate my gratitude for even being part of the resilience dialogues, preliminary phase. It was a very fruitful process. And I think a lot of, if we embark, or if you embark upon this general plan update, there's going to be a lot of opportunities and obstacles that will be revealed that really can be leveraged to turn Mount Shasta back into the crown jewel of California. I also want to just remind us all that there's a lot of complementary processes that are already underway. The city has been a strong leader in the Integrated Regional Water Management Group. And we're right now updating our plan, which a major emphasis is climate change. So in addition to the interns and other experts you might want to import into the region, I think you also have an abundance of community partnerships that you can, we can also leverage to move forward on some of this. I also think, like, when I hear three and a half years, I'm like, ah, more planning! I hope that there's also a, that in the process of moving forward in a proactive effort that really can only generate benefit for this area. Resilience essentially means minimizing exposure to natural disasters and encouraging healthy ecosystems and restoration. So no matter which way this goes, it's going to benefit the community. But I do hope that we can move forward on some practical actions that can bring, that can advance the city economically, environmentally, as well as kind of redefine our identity as the top of the state and the headwaters of the Sacramento River. I just, so yeah, on behalf of the Mount Shasta Bio-Regional Ecology Center, we are in full support of this. We are very eager to assist in any way appropriate. And we have full confidence in your city planner to lead the city through this promising next phase.
Thank you. Any last comments from those of you sitting out there in all your patience? No, okay, council discussion. Are we ready? Yes.
I would like to thank the city manager and the city planner and all those who are involved in this and move resolution CC seventeen dash fifty-seven for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's done unanimously. Thank you. And now we have a very exciting topic of awarding a window replacement project. Rod, you're on.
Not as exciting, but we are proposing to replace all the windows in the police department side of City Hall as well as the east wall of the library. Last year, the library put out their project independently, didn't get a single bid. So we decided, since we had windows failing at City Hall and leaking, we decided to combine the projects and put it out to bid this year, offer hopefully more competitive bid. And we almost didn't get enough bids again. However, we did ultimately get a bid from Sealed Construction. We are proposing to, like I said, replace all of the windows at City Hall, Police Department, and the east wall library. The total project amount is 52,000. We had budgeted this project this year for the city police department building portion was 23,000. We were about 10,000 under on our estimate of that, partly because we really didn't have a budget number. We didn't have an estimate to go by, so we kind of just guessed. And so we are proposing a budget adjustment to be able to go ahead and replace all the windows now. Like I said, they are starting to fail. They are leaking. And a couple of them won't even open and close anymore. They are literally just failing. And so they do have a lifetime guarantee or warranty on these new windows. They're very energy efficient. I'm assuming greenhouse, it's good for greenhouse gases somehow in that. So that's what we're proposing is the proposed resolution along with the budget adjustment to be able to award this project.
Questions to Rod?
Was there, on the police department, was there like safety bulletproof glass that's being put in there? What was that, a while back, we talked about that?
Well, I believe that they were requesting that. However, that's not part of the bid right now. We settled on just putting mirrored glass, mirrored windows on the dispatch windows. There's four of them. That was a slightly different bid price. They were a little more expensive. But bulletproof, we didn't feel was cost-effective. There's, not sure if it's absolutely necessary. We did talk about interim measures. Some of the windows already have like expanded metal grating over the top of them. We can do something like that. But we can also approach the contractor with a possible change order to upgrade those to bulletproof glass. If that's the priority of the police department and city manager, I'd be happy to look into that if that's the direction we want to go. But we didn't include that in the bid. Just, I figured we could address that if we wanted to.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe talk to, maybe talk to Parrish about that. It was a concern a while back.
We can sure get an estimate from them and see if it's doable.
Rod, I'm concerned that we had no bids that came in during the time period. We only had one, one party even show up for the pre-bid meeting. Tell us more about that. Why didn't Cascade or North State Glass or whoever even show up?
Good question. There's one glass company in town that I know of. They did not submit a bid. I couldn't tell you why. I didn't ask them.
I know we can go ahead with the award of the contract. I feel uncomfortable doing that without actually perhaps reopening. I feel uncomfortable doing that without actually perhaps reopening. If we were to reopen, we could, would delay it by what, about a month, month and a half?
Yeah, probably. Would definitely be a delay. Our goal would be to get them done before winter.
Right. So we would still come in?
You know, this thing's been out to bid a couple times. I just don't have any hope that we're going to get any qualified this. This is the company out of Redding, or Chico, somewhere not even around here. So I, you know, it's...
I, yeah, I understand. And it's over $14,000 more than the city had expected, almost 40% higher. So under those circumstances, I would feel more comfortable taking an extra month or so, and third time's a charm. Sometimes.
I don't know. That's entirely up to council. We can certainly do that. That's not my recommendation tonight. I want to move forward, I want to get it done. We've got a lot of things, you know, going on. And to me, to putting this thing out again is just a waste of time, to be honest. So, it's up to you.
How was it?
And I might, I do want to add too, that the $23,000 budgeted, yeah, it's low, but we didn't have a number to go by. We were using our construction experts in-house to come up with an estimate. So it could be a function of a high bid, it could also be we under-budgeted, so.
How was this put out to bid?
It was advertised in the local newspaper a couple times for two weeks. It was also put on the Shasta Builders Exchange in Redding. Which is typical of our bid process.
Did we send out any information or bid requests, or these to any of the local contractors?
The local contractor actually helped us in the preliminary develop the contract documents to determine what to actually put in the bid documents. So we did consult with him. I think there was a difference of construction method that he wanted to use regarding how the new windows would go in. That may be why he didn't bid. But yeah, we consulted with the one and only before we put this out to bid to try to get some kind of budget estimate and construction methods and, you know, some recommendations for what to install.
I too had those questions, just about process, Rod. It's not, doesn't feel real comfortable to spend $14,000 more than what we had estimated. But given your explanation about having consulted with the local contractor, the local business, I guess I'm comfortable with that explanation. So I wonder if there's, is there any more discussion? Yes, Barbara?
So is that $10,000 more for the police windows, another $4,000 for the library portion? Is that how it kind of added up?
Yeah. The budget adjustment only covers the police department side.
Right. Because the library has its own.
There's a little bit of a contingency, I guess, in the library budget. I'm not familiar with that. But the $3,800 on the library side didn't seem to be an issue. And no budget adjustment was required for that.
Yeah. And I know that that wall, that east wall in the library's been leaking over the past couple winters, I believe. So when they go in there and do the repairs, are they also going to have some way to repair any water damaged walls? Is that part of the process as well?
Absolutely, that is the goal. Any damage or rotted wood in the framing that's discovered when they remove the old windows will be replaced.
Just the framing, but nothing beyond that?
Didn't specify. Our goal is to replace all the wood and make it a good wall again. Even if we have to have our guys step in, do some more framing, whatever, to make the end product watertight, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you. Other questions of Rod?
One more question. Well, if, and I recognize it's not your proposal to go out for a bid a third time, but if you were, what would you do differently to attract more potential bidders, or to more widely disseminate and advertise and broadcast the fact that the city is looking for bids to replace the windows in the library and the police department?
If we were to re-advertise a project, I would likely do the same things, and then add, maybe sending the advertisement for bids directly to some known contractors that do this type of work. I would have to do research, because I don't really know of any. Yeah, I'm not sure what else you can do. You can put it in the Redding newspaper, that might, I mean, that might get some more interest. It's, you know, fairly expensive to, a little bit more money to advertise with them.
I know most contractors I know are so incredibly busy that they wouldn't bid on something this low at this present time. So what we have is, we have a dilemma. We have some windows that need to be replaced so we don't have further damage. Mold's a tremendous issue these days. We don't want to open ourselves up to that problem. So I think that no matter who you put it out to, knowing what I know about the bid process right now and how busy contractors are, you may not get another bid. I mean, it is, it's really hard to get anybody to do any remodeling or anything of that nature right now. I mean, there's six-month, nine-month, year waiting list just for that in this area. So it's been very difficult. So, I don't know. I think we maybe should just move on with this and get it done, because this is the way the environment is today. And I don't want to see any further damage or any mold problems be created, because we didn't take advantage of it this year before winter. I wish we could get more bids, but I personally, knowing what I know about the business climate right now, I don't think it's going to do much good, so.
Just to piggyback on that, I wonder if it would be an improvement to try and think ahead enough when you're not under crisis to put these kinds of things out earlier in the year, early springtime, and kind of get the jump on the really busy time. It's the only thing I can think of. But I leave that to the professionals. So are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll move.
Okay.
Well, at least I'm being consistent.
Rosalyn, do you have any public comment?
No.
Thank you. Yes, now, motion.
Kathy, do we have a CCR number on this? I move that we approve CCR 17-58 and award window replacement project contract to Sealed Construction Corporation in the amount of $52,439. And approve budget adjustment number 2017-03.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Discussion, more discussion.
Yes? Now that we have a motion, you can second.
Yes, yes, it's fine.
I am going to go in favor of this with reluctance. I feel very comfortable about the process and, but... Paul here, because between Paul and Rod, you've convinced me that maybe this is the best thing to do under the circumstances.
I feel, I'm reluctant also, but I feel we need to do this.
More discussion? I still, yeah, I would love to see the city revisit, you know, the bidding process. Maybe there's another way we could reach out. I'm not, I'm not very familiar with the industry. I trust that, you know, I'm wondering, you know, what are some of the other cities doing to get bids? Is there an exploration possibility? Are there other, is there something we're missing? Is there another way that people reach out to get bids that maybe we're not thinking about? I don't know. It just seems like it's worth a revisit.
My comment about pricing, construction pricing, is that it can be volatile. And you're, if you have a very bullish market for housing construction, you may have underestimated what it would cost to do this project versus the reality of the construction industry locally right now. So I'm going to side, not so reluctantly, but realistically with the Public Works Director.
Okay. Now, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay. Item number 12 on the agenda is the League of California Cities Annual Resolution. Kathy, do you explain, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, earlier this year, the council designated Mayor Morder as the voting delegate for the annual League of Cities Conference. There are two resolutions for council to consider. Hopefully council has had the opportunity to review the two resolutions. I recommend that council come to a consensus and direct Mayor Morder how to place votes for the city of Mount Shasta.
Thank you. Any questions of Kathy? Rosalyn, have you a comment? No. Okay, council discussion?
Do you feel like doing this?
Say that again?
Do you feel like doing this?
Voting at the ca... Oh, sure.
Check your enthusiasm.
No, I'm in.
In terms of the two items, I have to say I'm not keen on either one. Certainly I'm not keen on number one. But I would suggest that we leave it to the voting delegates discretion after hearing the floor debates that typically take place at the convention.
Didn't know that was an option. Other comments?
I remember reading them over, they both sounded reasonable to me. I was, I would vote for both of these. Yes.
So I would make a motion that we leave it to the voting delegates discretion on how to vote on behalf of the city of Mount Shasta on these two items, after hearing the pros and cons.
Is there a second?
I second that.
So council discussion. So there'll be two of you attending the meeting with me. It would be out of line to ask for your input outside of tonight's discussion, is that correct?
You can only ask one of us.
Right. So I've heard from you, Barbara, that you like the both. I've heard from you, Tim, that you're questionable about the first one, but I'm comfortable with that discretion.
Probably neither Barbara Wagner nor I will be hearing the floor discussion, because there are other things that are going on at the convention that we probably will be attending while you're attending these matters.
That's fine. So there's a motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I thought we were still in discussion, I thought we were still in discussion, ayes. I mean, I think I'm opposed, actually, because I feel like, I feel like we're offloading our responsibility to know what's on the floor to vote on. I think the original idea of having the council decide the vote is appropriate. Otherwise, we're just having one single person decide the vote where, you know, we represent all the people in all aspects.
As a practical matter, I hear, and as a practical matter, the large cities have so many delegates that our single vote probably is not going to matter, because it's not a one-vote-one city. It's depending on size. So the big cities get a whole lot more votes.
We know our cities, we know our...
Right. And I do trust our mayor in terms of her discretion.
And we're all five council members that represent the total population of Mount Shasta. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I think we have, thank you. I think we had a vote. Four in favor and one, Barbara, opposed. Thank you. Okay. If I'm not mistaken, we're looking at council reports on attendance at appointed and outside meetings. Go ahead and jump in.
Councilman Wagner and I participated in the CTC teleconference with the three cities last week. And a number of questions asked, answered. Bottom line is, CTC is going to be going forward with the drafting of its final report, which I anticipate we'll be getting in the, well, in the future, although I don't think there was a date set for that. We do have a follow-up meeting, a teleconference with CTC, I think on, what did I say?
September 21st?
21st. And we have scheduled a three-cities lunch meeting for the 20th to discuss the matter.
Thank you. John, anything?
For a change, I actually had a couple meetings that I went to. I'll start with the lighter one, that would be the DIAC meeting of, I think it was August 12th. But we had three topics of discussion, and they were how to re-invigorate or restart the art walk, how to find artists to do mural, actually paint the murals around town. We only have one artist, and that would be John from the tattoo place. And he's waiting to get "Not So Busy" to do his project. And then the final item was how to attract Amazon-proof businesses. But prior to that, we got into a discussion about the, creating a one-way situation, driving situation in downtown. So I thought that was interesting. I thought it died as an issue, but Tim brought it up, and there seemed to be a lot of energy to try to come to a conclusion as to whether it would be a beneficial thing for downtown businesses, and therefore make it a reality possibly in the future. Require some more study, I assume, but it was an interesting discussion. As far as the art walk goes, I do remember it being somewhat popular a few years ago, and then it sort of fading away, and apparently no one participates in it anymore. So we were, we discussed how to go about approaching the art galleries to see what the problem was and what we could possibly do to restart that Friday night, yeah.
Rather than being the monthly, it might be...
Every other month or quarterly.
Special events, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, and see if people might be interested in participating if there'd be more people in town, and therefore make it more well-attended. So that'll be ongoing. I suggested at the meeting that we go after art students, because this is a, while the city of DIAC will provide the materials for the costs, the artists, you know, to purchase supplies, it's still considered a volunteer effort on the part of an artist. So I suggested we approach the local community colleges in nearby counties, including up in Oregon, and the universities as far north as possibly, well, certainly Southern Oregon University, but even maybe Oregon University in Eugene, to see if there's some artists with time and actually want to express themselves on a volunteer basis. And I think I mentioned that we may have to actually pay somebody if we can't get this done. So that was looked upon favorably. And then lastly, we got into a fairly lengthy discussion about Amazon-proof businesses. And from my readings, and we sort of leaned towards making... And from my readings and we, we sort of leaned towards making, making an effort to attract more restaurants and, you know, somehow setting up, somehow getting out into the public, into different business circles that Mount Shasta is here with rentable space. So I don't know that, besides directly calling other businesses, because, you know, such as like a Dunsmere Brewery, we would like to open up a, you know, a micro brewery in, in downtown area. Besides directly calling restaurateurs and other businesses to say, hey, can you take a look at us, we're still trying to formulate how to approach possible businesses in faraway places that might open a branch here or actually grow here or move here. So it was a discussion meeting and I thought it was pretty friendly and I think we're leaning in some positive directions regarding all these different issues. My other meeting-
Couple of questions on that, maybe?
Sure.
Did anyone from-
Tim's here too, so he can back me up a little bit.
Did anyone from beautification attend? They had planned to-
Beautification did not attend.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing it up, they, is that Kim Solga is, is a mural artist who proposed something through the beautification committee and they're actually, they were told by our planning staff that to, to get the liability and everything worked out would be, it would be premature to hire her. So they're looking at going with a privately funded series of murals to begin with.
On the, on the power boxes and the-
No, no, murals on walls in the, in town. She has this proposal to do bear. It's really important that the two committees come together around this murals because you're both working on separate mural projects.
I think we discussed that.
And, and I know, I noted in the paper under something that talked about what Shasta Regional Foundation had funded. They did fund Kim Solga to the tune of, I don't know, I've forgotten the amount now for, for art projects.
Yeah, I saw her name mentioned, yeah.
So it's really important that, that connection be made so that we get clear about whose role is whose, who's got the lead on it.
We should make a point of making sure that she's invited to the next DEAC meeting.
I, I think it's important that you invite the beautification committee folks, not Kim. Kim has been working with beautification and whether, I don't know where it should fall, but it's not up to Kim to decide to whom to report to and coordinate with. It should be between the advisory committees, in my opinion. And I'll leave that to staff to work out with the members of the advisory committees. I'm not on either one of them, just trying to share information.
Okay, so you would like DEAC and beautification to work-
Together.
Jointly on, on getting these murals painted.
To get a clear, clarity about who's got the lead on it.
Right.
Role and responsibility-wise. It could fit into what Bruce has talked about in terms of his strategic action item to, to work on the public participation piece and clarify what advisory committees are doing, that sort of thing, but that's a long time to wait.
Okay, so the other, other meeting-
Oh, and the one last thing, I'm sorry, is that, I'll, I'll cover it when I, cover mine.
So the other meeting I went to was the LTAC meeting and I came in a little bit late. Bruce was there also and Juliana. Apparently, it was decided by LTAC to let Juliana put out to bid the architectural planning RFP for a 4,200 square foot project that would be approximately 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars for construction. And then LTAC would wait for the, the bids to come in and if, my impression was that if it was in the range of 100, 200,000 dollars, they would be, they would look favorably on those bids. But if they go over 200,000, they may actually choose to reject.
1.2?
No, 100,000, oh, for the construction, 1.2 to 1.5. But the planning, but the planning RFP, Juliana thinks will be coming in between 100 and 300,000 dollars. My impression from LTAC, the members of LTAC, is that they will look favorably and approve a, a bid in the 100 to 200,000 dollar range, but not above 200,000. They might actually reject that and gave me the impression that they would try to either find a better way to come up with the planning for this or abandon the project entirely. But, but as Bruce and Juliana made clear, the city council actually is the board of trustees over the library and its finances and can actually override decisions or advisory decisions of LTAC and have the final say in these matters. So in other words, if the bid came in at, say, 250,000 dollars and LTAC decided they didn't like that and work or recommend against that, we, that we, the council not accept that bid, we could, we could override that decision and actually accept it?
It, it's important to remember, the committee is only advisory to the council.
Right.
You are not bound by their advice.
Right.
So you are the decision-making body based on public and committee input.
So it was a bit of a learning experience for me.
We actually are the, the library trustees, as I recall.
Correct.
Right. So whereas LTAC may disapprove of the bids, the final, the approved bid, we could override and decide that, that the bid is, is appropriate and then move forward with the planning and architectural design and sequel process for the library addition. So, actually, it was a very important meeting and has the bid been, has the RFP been put out to bid yet?
No, it hasn't.
Okay, when, when do you think that's going to happen?
It should be coming out in the next week or so.
That's my report.
I attended a CEDAC meeting. You were there, weren't you? Yeah. And after a long discussion, we decided to focus on one thing at a time, which was to try to find or solicit a brew pub into the area.
A brew pub, yeah.
A brew pub into a certain location in town.
Focus on trying to find businesses to fill the-
Yes. And trying, yeah, trying to find specific businesses to fit certain properties that are for lease or, or empty at this time. It's basic-
It's had a fancy name, Business Something Program, right? A BPP?
It was, yeah.
What?
Business Placement Program.
Oh, BPP.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're working on the same thing. We should talk.
Your, your, your efforts would go beyond the downtown part.
Yes.
So Paul and I attended a Housing Discovery Ad Hoc meeting with Juliana. We got a really good start. We identified many stakeholders, which we lumped into four primary areas. The real estate, the, the building, real estate building, private homeowners who haven't built their pieces and- No. Was it?
Landowners.
Lending, the lending organizations. So building and development, one, real estate, two, lending groups financing, three, and vacant residential parcel owners, four. And we, we looked at the kinds of questions in, in general, which we might ask, ask of those folks, which included things around housing demand, their perception of housing demand, things around permitting and government policy, things around financing, questions around land and surrounding resources, including costs, those sorts of things, the state and regional factors that go beyond our control that are mentioned currently in the housing element, general opportunities and restrictions and housing options and types. So our next steps are to develop a survey, we, to, to create contacts for each of the stakeholders to decide whether we'll personally interview them and/or will we do a focus group and/or will we do a survey to them. And there was a draft letter that she presented to us that would go out to each of the stakeholders, which we have not yet finalized. And, and she'll provide us with a breakdown of each question group with the draft questions and a zoning map, because we had some questions about existing zoning. Do you have anything else, Paul?
I have been contacting people for specific groups.
Okay, great. So good start. And I think we have a next date. Yeah. Okay. Team, Team Shasta hosted a meeting in Wyreka that very shortly became a, a larger organization that has been named the Siskiyou Homelessness Coalition, of which Team Shasta will be members, whoever wants to participate in that effort. And members of the group were members of family resource centers, members of Wyreka staff and council members, a couple of both behavioral health and social services agencies were represented. Anyway, so, so among the conclusions, which I can bring with me currently here, wait The main thing to get going is a, is a case management system countywide to identify the people, one to two people, North County and South County, who are in need of wraparound services and, including housing. And Behavioral Health has offered funding to hire a contractor. Ed Petches, who is on Team Shasta and has involved himself in every possible meeting and aspect of the situation, is a likely candidate for that, though he had not planned to be hired for the position. He would coordinate the formation of a, essentially a multidisciplinary team, such as they use in the area on aging to identify individuals who need support and they, and they make sure that the team that assembles has the, has the information and resources available to decide how to best support an individual. We'll be moving forward on the point in time counts. There was discussion about how to involve the family resource centers who are broke to enter the homeless management information system. Each entity that provides services has to register with that. That costs 500 dollars. For the license, yes, plus there's a small annual fee. And there was some conversation about whether or not cities could support the, their community resource centers with that fee. Anyway, there were a number of things identified as follow-up objects and, or, or agenda items. And the next meeting has been scheduled for September 12th, I believe. And meanwhile, we're sending out the Marbitts Report and the video to other communities with, with an invitation. It's just information, but it's, but, but with infant, with an invitation to join the, the coalition, to, to participate in whatever ways we identify to help that those that are truly homeless or truly needy. Afterwards, I met with the Wyreka mayor and city manager and we talked a little bit more about homelessness, their situation and ours. And I also introduced, again, because the Wyreka mayor is, is on our League of Cities Division Leadership Team, the idea of, of creating a rural caucus at the League of Cities. And we're going to follow up with that because of the, more like the very thing you mentioned earlier, Tim, cities have many, many delegates and, to everything and we, we are represented by so few people that, that our, our, our reality doesn't weigh in when it comes to legislation statewide. I attended the Community Eclipse event that was partially funded. Are you going to make it?
No.
I have some water. Would you like some? Partially funded by, it was funded in, in small part by the Ford Family Foundation, fun event, probably, the paper said 200, maybe that many. Everybody watching the eclipse in, in various ways. It was a, a nice morning. I'm working with Parrish on a Team Shasta item about creating a flyer for visitors that express our expectations around public safety, the environment, as well as list public resources, such as where, where the library is, where the hospital is, where the post office is, that kind of thing, something that, that would, that could be handed out as well as put in a, a, a holder of brochures to help people feel like they know what we expect of them when they come to our home. And lastly, the thing I mentioned earlier to you, John, was I've been approached by a woman whose first name is Lugene, who's the executive director for the Siskiyou Arts Council. And she is privy to a very, a significant grant available for, for the arts, promoting the arts in rural communities. And we haven't yet set a date, but I, I just want to have an initial meeting with her and-
Is she going to get the grant? I'm sure.
I don't know yet, but I, I'm sure part of her fact-finding is to find out what Mount Shasta might want to be, might be interested in, and I don't know, so I'll be connecting her with other folks. That's it.
So Eugene is a female name as well, some male?
I'm sorry?
Eugene's a feminine, it's a feminine name as well?
Lugene.
Oh, Lugene.
It's Lugene.
Sorry.
L-U-G-E-N-E. I'm sorry, I didn't bring her business card. I've forgotten her last name.
Lugene.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Move on. Oh, Barbara, you have more?
I attended a couple CTC meetings. Tim mentioned them already. So we had two since the last council meeting, two teleconferences. And we had represented this from both Weed and Dunsmere on the line, as well as Mount Shasta, productive meetings. We had, for the public, we had two strategic planning meetings since the last council meeting, so we had all five council members attending, plus the city manager. We came up with a, a long list of priorities, so we'll see that coming to council one of these days, I think. I attended the Active Transportation Committee on Friday, August 18th, and I really enjoyed the meeting more than any other meeting so far because they're becoming more concise and one of the things we, we covered was the clarification of the decision-making process, specifically clarifying the role of advisory committees as recommending action and then going through the process of putting new items on the agenda, that is, keeping the agendas small and digestible and also looking for consensus of at least two, two committee members to add an item to the agenda. That's, that's the standard procedure. And then invitation for the ATC to change the meeting time, date and location. The object of this is to find opportunities for the public to be more participant and engaging during the meetings. So we're looking at more afternoon, at a public setting, either a library or some other public place, so that people could feel that these meetings are more accessible to them. So that was also something we covered. And then we're looking at county-wide bike and pedestrian plan. So Juliana drafted a letter, again, to send to all these stakeholders. So I'm in charge of contacting the cities of Weed, Dunsmere and McLeod. I sent a letter to the city managers today, well, for McLeod, it's the, of course, the district, head of the district. So I sent those letters out today. And then all the other committee members were responsible for various aspects of the community, the Dunsmere Rotary, Weed Rotary, a number of other stakeholders, the letters going out to.
What is that for?
For a county-wide bike and pedestrian master plan. So Juliana's looking- So Juliana's looking for all our committee members to go out and get support letters. And then Juliana's going to collect those and then send an official letter to the county stating the support for a county-wide bike system.
Thank you. Lots going on. Okay, future agenda items. Any proposals for changes? I think we need to add the second public hearing for the ADUs, right? And as far as the approval of forming an advisory committee to the PCT Association, I'm not going to be here on 9/25. I will be in Hawaii, and I don't intend to call in. So we'll have to do that meeting, perhaps the first meeting in October. We could. That would be fun. A luau. We don't have enough fun. Anything else? Other changes for the agenda? Okay. Okay, I'm going to do it very lightly. We're adjourned.